We shall remember what we've done. Let's all make the Lord our God. Our God is the people, God of all. Let's let me, I swear, be on the square. To live on you, let it fall. To be right for, to down the road you can't. Let's all go wrong. To some we cry, oh, bad. To baby stars, all eyes, oh, Christ. And that's you. So, we will be all. The light of rising sun, we love and cheer. To we have languished all the years, all the years. God bless your throne. Oh, him we trust, show them they're singing. Oh, him your throne. God bless your throne. We have been what I planned, from what I know. To the Roswell City. We have victorious, but from that meaning. What glory our song, blessed singing. It's all your throne. Oh, him your throne. We shall always remember all that there is. In the God of freedom, oh, here are his. All our flesh and blood, who play the Lord. Sing, oh, your throne. Oh, him your throne. No one sunshine everywhere. We are going on our own. He is coming, surely what's wrong. Surely.
Thank you. We observe a minutes silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra and the time starts now. When our heroes pass, we celebrate them. And our heroes living, as we continue to fight on. The full restoration of Biafra. He said, he said, he said. Now we go to opening prayers by our Supreme Leader, Massey Namdi Kano.
As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukwueke Abiamah must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must. Proceed to offer every to Chukwueke Abiamah who resided in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today, but from of old. Our Father, who art in heaven, nanyinkebe nelewe, kahagedinso. That your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it. That we may offer every glory unto thee. That we may offer you every adoration and adulation, because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day, you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy. That you are our Lord, our God, and our Creator. This evening, we offer these your children unto thee. All over this very planet that you created, they are listening. Across the entire twenty-four time zones on this very planet, we are the inhabit. They are listening to your gospel evening. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal. This very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation, as only you ordained. On the putting meaning that this very gospel must be preached. That mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit, because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh, Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year, we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood. They have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the third year of August, as we are being failed by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and darkness, we remain very strong today. To beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace. To ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth. That you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created. For one singular purpose, and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in very honesty. Is there any way that we have had? Is there any way your ancestors may have been? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh, Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. Because you must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough, we have been subjugated enough, we have been tortured enough, we have been imprisoned enough, we did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to burn your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing, which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you. To destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children. Because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor, and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty. Because we remain every blessed day. Chukwueke Abiamah believe go whiter than white and whiter than snow. Oh, hosts, are you see me? Are you check it? Is there any way that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses? To enable us to fulfill your own word, which was spoken thousands of years ago. That instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth will cease to exist. You opened your mouth, Chukwueke Abiamah, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweh Heshua, who came here and said, let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven. Those words can never be in vain, because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why, in the end, we know that Biafra will come. That these children that we have given birth to all over the world. And their children, and their children, and their children. As long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, Chukwueke Abiamah, they will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be wrought in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery, and your grace. Under our command, oh, Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succor to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one man, one flesh of your children. The ethics and the bibios, the ison, the shekiri, the isobos, and also those of them from Isoko. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Ige, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy. Because Biafra will come, and when it does, Chukwueke Abiamah, we will dance on these streets. I'm telling you, by the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad. We are drunk in your glory, and rightfully so. Because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable software. That your will may be fulfilled in our time. All these we pray, all these we ask for. In no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. I had in so sin a big, a big, a big. He said, yeah, he said, yeah. He said. My name is Namdi Kano. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you.
Thank you to our Supreme Leader for opening the floor.
Thank you.
And at this point, we will play the welcoming jingle. Which displays the heritage of Apakworo State as part of the program of the day. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Apakworo State, the facto government in the homeland. We are happy to be here, we love you, and everyone that have joined us today. And at this very point, we call on the state admin. Apakworo State Admin, the ball is in your court, take off the stage. Apakworo State Admin, where are you?
Alright, alright, thank you so much, my honorable Minister of Information, Abong Sonia Parawa. I'm greeting your excellency, the acting Prime Minister of the Biafra Republic Government in Elza. Massey Okigundu Nkere. And greetings to all the cabinet members of the Biafra Republic Government, Elza, your presence. And special greetings to all the administrators of the defacto governments in the homeland, your presence. And all the amenities of the thousands of visitors, your presence. Also, special greetings to my executives in Apakworo State, who are equally present. And a great. All the fans of us of free, yeah, present. And this is Apakworo State Army, I want to humbly apologize for we had delay around before the meeting started. But all the same, I'm glad to welcome everyone to this special occasion. And before I start, please permit me to especially greet you all in the traditional way of the Apakworo people. Oke, 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 Abakoro, we. Oke, 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 Abakworo, we. Oke, 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 Abanki, we. Oke, 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 Abak, who be one of the Biafra Republic Government in Elza, we. Once again, I welcome everyone specially to this wonderful occasion, so Apakworo State Town Hall Meeting. And to start with, I want to take everyone down to the brief history of Apakworo State. I know a whole lot of you might be confused about where the state or the people that are made of the state are coming from. Apakworo State is one of the states that was carved out of the old Acquabon States. The other three states being the Dungibom, Ipana, and Koa Eka States. The people of Oro are ancient people, ancient warriors. We are ancestrally related to the ethnic people of Kalaba, the Ibono, and also the Wafia people of all Abia States. In the nature by virtue of history and documentation, the Oro people are equally Ibo's. Also, I want to let you all know that the Oro people originally were a calitarian society. They believe in equal rights for everyone. They believe everyone have the right to lead for every opportunities in whichever he or she found herself. The people of Oro were again the enslavements of Africans from the beginning. They never for one sold out their kingsmen to the Europeans. And they were against injustice from the beginning. Because of their stubbornness, that was the reason the European, when they came in, they reversed to our forefathers as the tom short people. Meaning people who are raised in the astoban, because we refused to allow them to slave our people. And in return, our forefathers called the European, the invading criminals, European, matan, which means slurs of men. In Oro, Oro, Apakworo people, the land of Oro currently is highly blessed. According to the record kept down by the zoo, which we know is more and more important than that. Oro State has over three hundred and seventy-seven oil wells, according to records. The land is blessed with a whole lot of them natural resources, like gravel, silica, diamonds, and even natural salts. And so far, just like our borders in the interland have been marginalized in the zoo called Nigeria, the Oro people has equally faced a whole lot of marginalization, which is so bad. Despite the fact that they hold all the resources, there is poverty in Oro currently. There's no good route, no electricity, people are living at the mercy of their oppressor. Also, the Oro people from the beginning, we've made it very clear in the nineteen ninety-nine, Oro right, acts of right rather, when the Oro people came together to write to the zoo national assembly, to let them know that our people, our offer, that our kings were never consulted before they were forced into the contraption called Nigeria. That as a result of that, we do not want to be part of this contraption called Nigeria. We are an ancient nation that existed over four hundred, over hundred of years ago, before even the advent of the European. So, we made it clear to them that if this, we are not allowed to stay on our own, chances are that our land will be taken away from us. And the thing that God Almighty has given to us to enjoy will not be allowed to enjoy. And since then, nothing has been done. The criminals in our land, who are masquerading as politicians, have been the ones selling us out so far. It is shocking to know that since the creation of Acquabon State, an Oro man has never been allowed to become the governor of the state. That is it, levels of marginalization that is going on. Meanwhile, the Oro, as a whole, black themselves as the contributors of almost eighty percent of the natural resources that Acquabon State is posting of today, which is very harmful to it. Our people, and currently, there's a report that the full army headmen are equally occupying our land. And then nothing is still being done about that. Our people have equally been a victim of the war during the nineteen sixty Biafran-Nigeria War, where the Urufon, Uruko, Uruko market was bombed, was bombed by the Nigerian forces. And because of this particular ugly incident, our people got into problem with the people of Eka. Because it's widely believed that UK listener who was very close to Ibrahim Babangida then was the one who gave the orders for our people to be bombed in the market, where hundreds of our people were killed. This incident today is regarded as one of the worst incidents that occurred during the war in Apakworo State. We have been part and parcel of this struggle from the beginning. We want freedom, and we have come to realize that the only way that Oro can be truly free, the only way that Oro can truly free and utilize our natural resources is the total restoration of Biafra. And because of that, our people in Oro, who are part of this struggle, were extremely happy. Happy when we sat down and wrote to our honorable minister back in two years ago for the creations of Oro State. Which our forefathers have asked the zoo all, all this why, and they have granted to them. And our honorable minister, through spiritual guardians and conversation, immediately approved the creation of Apakworo State. And today, we stand today as one of the confederation states of Biafra. And trust me, when Biafra is fully restored, Apakworo State is definitely going to be one of the richest states under the United States of Biafra. As a result of this, I want to welcome all Biafrans who are here. I know we have a whole lot of challenges to face. There are too many subutas within us. But still, I want to encourage everyone. If you are a subutwa within, look back, remember that there are people who are at the mercy of their oppressor. There are people back home who might lose their land or their means of living home because of the invading strafes of Lani and what is going on in Nigeria. If you have any iota of empathy or humanity in you, you stop sabotaging what we are doing. So, I want to encourage everyone, if you have your opportunity to lead the people, please sit up and lead them wholeheartedly. No amount of sabotage and no intimidation is going to stop us from what we are doing. We've come so we might come be free totally. And trust me, at the end of the day, Biafra must be restored. I thank everyone once again, and I want to welcome everyone who attended to this Apakworo State Town Hall Meeting. May God bless all of you as you continue to support the men on ground, so as to pursue all the terrorist even in our land. At the end of the day, Biafra shall be restored. Thank you, and may God bless you. Welcome once again. Mister Sonia Parawa, I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, honorable admin of Apakworo, thank you for that address. Uh, run to the next item. Call on the next item, please, on the program.
The breaking presentation of Kula Noda will be done by the media director of Apakworo State. It can, I'm sure he's here, please, you can unmute the voice, unmute the voice, go ahead.
Let him raise his hand. The voice, raise your hand, so that we can spot you. The voice, raise your hand, please. The voice, are you here? Raise your hand. Is the voice here for the breaking of Kula Nods?
The voice is here, the voice, raise your hand up.
Okay, I can see him now. Alright, the voice, you have, over to you. Unmute yourself and go ahead with the item number five. The voice, unmute yourself for. The voice, unmute yourself and continue the program, item number five.
Okay.
Uche, 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 bari, Abakoro, oui. Uche, 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 bari, Oragobut, Oragumo, oui. Uche, 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 kaga Biafra, oui. Uche, Biafra, kisongoro, oui.
Oui.
Um, bon. I will be using my dialects, uh, so that I can communicate straight, please, um, be with me. Ousemvem, bibonga, azanokion, olodivonwe, enopujeté, enomongo, kusemvem. Lelagikuisong, Ora, ngugoyong, abaziguisong, abazigoboni, amoneenomongo, ainovum, ainoga, ainoyong. Ntanglakabonekuwa, ntanglakudakabon, onozemungu, o abasi. Dian, avrebrisong, amonizongvom. Bon, dian guboné, dian gulo, dian gonyi, dian garay. Bon, gema golo, ilalazon, pantoko, unpoor, unpoofna, korgidi, ogonono, donggumbo, afogon, kua bonito. Avonotan, avonot, dongu, yelok, bagantanzan. Dongu, senvrem, kune, kui, ma, mleke, zene, wunifode, kwe, zongoro. Ewunifode, bonito, kogo, vrevenbi, kule, magubon, magefak, dongabasi. Amavave, bogonyi, gonyi, dongbo. Esomom. Sola ndambé, ekemi, kusemvem. Sambi, kemmi, sambi, ayayami, amono fofo, ngagubon, onozemungu. Abasi, amegel, gisingi, zangam, Biafra, imetikye, emagugu, kisongoro. Ema, bobribon, ema, oyawee, ema, vrebriswe, giga, babaasi. Avrebriswe, kisongoro, gonyi, 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 gonyi. Dongadarado, woh, agad, me, garo, agad, mufyomo, nape, vrema, ame, kuro, donge, baramewo. Kowewo, ewermeo. Mm. Semelu, diem, dro, gusra, semelu, diem, dro, gema, bakibon, orio, kong, kanzan, kanyen. Bon, kusemvem, Biafra, predi, amedi, ilisese, seride, netoguisong. Sangolo, ilasobion, donge, gbe, eski, bon, ewermeo. Mm. Ndekemi, gabo, azan, onkwa, zané, wama, weni, iné, bakine, weni, buto. Kusemvem, ngekemi, ngagubon, donggumbo, imekin. Ma, me, zede, nare, gbagi, zongoro, enesé, wunifou, gara, gara, ki, orosigun, ewu, woven, dongbo, ewermeo. Ewong, yu, frabak, ewong, yu, imaba, ewong, imaba, ewong, orosigun, seni, da, gurito, kisan, Biafra, ufrabane. Mbugelé, lèla, kusemvem, donge, lèla, baramewo, yé, imaba, kuisong, Biafra, yé, imaba, kumong, magubut. Yé, imaba, kuma, yé, meni, nena, kuma, meni, gbagi, gata, donge, imaba, dongbo, afung, gbagi, zongoro, emagugu. Amegel, pa, yé, gbagi, wunifou, emunimugu, esed, yé, gbagi, wunifou, iné, sélukidigusemvem, ame, luki diem, iluki diem, na, wunifou, mi, gbagi, wunifou. Mokilim, wunifou, mi, gbagi, mokrosuini, mete, me, 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 mambok, mokrosuini, bedindu, mokrosuini. Aragbo, mozukisong, ndangandang, dongbo. Yaga, yes, no, guslo, yé, yawo, gbagi, dong, yano, sosong, dongbo, yano, sosong, ndangandang, dongbo. Sombia, fre, gbagi, Ora, donggumbo. Iné, yé, gbagi, kufu, gbagi, iné, yé, gbagi, yé, gbagi, ki, ma, ogalwa, ogalwa, gbagi, ogalwa, gbagi, ogalwa, ogalwa, gbagi. Ogalwa, gbagi, yé, ma, dong, dong, gbagi, gbagi, na, yagaro, gbagi, gbagi, na, yagbra, dongbo, yé, ma, e, mabuso, e, maboyong, e, maboné, e, maboné. E, maboné, ufravunbi, zenzé, amen.
Amen.
Uche, 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 bari, kagoro, oui, uche, Biafra, no, oui, uche, 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 bari, bari, ngene, gbagi, yé, oui. Thank you very much, you mentioned, uh, see, I'm done with that prayer, uh, stand by.
All right, and thank you so much, the director of media in Akakororo State for that wonderful prayer.
Thank you.
I, I want to start by picking up the Kula Nods in order to encourage all the citizens of Akakororo State who are here. And Biafrans and lovers of freedom who have taken, taking time, taking up, making up time to, to be here with us today to support what we are doing. In order to support what we are doing as administrator of Akakororo State, I'm hungry, picking the Kula Nods with a sum of fifty thousand AJ, uh, fifty thousand through currency. Thank you very much. Over to you, Mister Sunny. The next item.
Hey, 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 hey. Hey, um.
Yes, mama, I'm here.
Um, the, the voice, yeah, um, uh, Bakoro said admin, I make, I mean, uh, equal, say, I make, woge. Uh, Ora, mora, tom, say, I make, I am appreciation for monzina donation.
All right, uh, boy, the voice, go ahead from that.
Mm-hmm, to make it look creative, so that it will go as synchronized.
Akamba. Oh, we are on mute, other is a bit, you are here, Daniel, if you're on, and, um.
Yes, Daniel, if you're on.
Akakororo first song, song, that's the angel.
That's the angel, more, uh. Bakoro first song, more, uh. Uh.
Okay, the, the, the voice is ready, the voice is ready, let's go here.
Yeah, the voice, now, now, you say.
Okay, equal, say, you coming now.
Uh-huh, equal, say, you coming, I'm, uh, appreciation.
Respectfully, my honourable Minister of Information, and His Excellency, the Coordinating Admin of Apakaboro State, and all other members of Diaphra here in this meeting. My name is Mr. Daniel Elefia Ambasi, the Able County Chairman of Aewan. Which, by God's grace, I've had opportunity to work under my my coordinating leader. Please, before I say anything for that, I want to pick a cola on behalf of Aewan County with a sum of five thousand AJ. And also, when they said they should sing a song with oral language, too many of them, but the opportunity was not given to me. In fact, oral anthem would have been the best for the one my brother brought, as in Nebasala Zofu. So please, when that time comes, we have more than enough to offer. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Daniel Elefia, thank you, thank you. All right, we come to, uh, Namak, Namak, over to you.
I want to sincerely thank everybody that is present to this wonderful garden here at Akbaroro. I want to personally pinpoint the, the somebody that read the welcome address. Somebody, if you want to mention, I thank you for the way you present the whole thing. It is marvelous and to know that we have a link with you people have a link with Tora Fia. From what we were just saying here. We're just one people, I really appreciate that. On behalf of our state, Aludho State, which means we are brother, more brothers and sisters than I think ever. We are picking cola note with ten thousand AJ. And we are welcome APM with ten thousand AJ for now. Thank you so much from Aludho State.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We come to, uh, Diaphra Best. Diaphra Best, over to you. Diaphra Best, unmute yourself. Diaphra Best is not ready, we come to Oma Mbalah, State Admin, unmute yourself.
Good evening, my honourable APM. Good evening, Minister of Information, and all the cabinet members, members, reps and dads. I want Amazi Obanago, Isola and St. Oma Mbalah State. And the Northern Region Head. I want to support my brothers with a sum of five thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Right, we come to, here is a, or where? Where is the State Admin, unmute yourself.
The good people of Diaphra, lovers of freedom, greetings to everyone. There were, honestly, I am so, so happy today. Greetings, my honourable Minister of Information. I greet you from our states. And my APM, who has been a wonderful work for us. May the Lord be with you. I greet everyone. I'm so happy today, honestly, today would have been for where it sits, but be, be as may God's plan. And today we are giving it to Apakaboro States. Um, honestly, I am so happy on the whole arrangement and everything. It means that Diaphra France, we are coming out, we are coming up. And I hope every other state administrator will take this leave and we show the world how we are. The State Administrator of Apakaboro, I thank you and your executive. God bless you. On behalf of, for where it sits, one of our brothers, Ezebin Abiaphra, has asked us to, to collect or break the cola note for Apakaboro State of thirty thousand AJ. And there were no.
There were, there were. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We come to Anorika. Anorika, unmute yourself. Anorika, unmute yourself, over to you.
Good evening, great Diaphra France. I welcome you people tonight. In fact, I'm um, in this town hall meeting for Apakaboro State. Um, I'm using this audio to thank them for their preparation. In fact, they are ready, they prepared very well for us. So I am supporting the town hall meeting with five thousand AJ from Odumegu State. And two thousand AJ for Lagos State. There were.
There were, there were.
There, Anorika.
Thank you, Anorika. Regent Fury, go ahead, over to you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much, my honourable Minister of Information. Greetings to great Diaphra France all over the world, especially our brothers and sisters from Apakaboro. Uh, thank you very much for the organization. I have become another leading example to all the states of Diaphra. And I really want to commend you. Greetings to our honourable Minister of uh, Information. To our honourable acting Prime Minister, His Excellency Yodichukukere, as well as our leader, our Prime Minister, His Excellency Prime Minister Simon Epa, and our leader Masunadikano, to every other leader. I greet all great Diaphra France, especially the, the military that are defending our babies, our children, our women. Thank you very much for all that you do. From Yoruba Isoko, uh, Diaphra De Fato, uh, I want to support this town hall meeting for Apakaboro for the defense of our babies, women and children with a sum of one thousand AJ. Thank you very much. I hear the mic.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We come to um, Tuthos. Tuthos, over to you. Tuthos.
Okay, OJ, 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 Barry Apakaboro.
Where?
OJ, 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 Barry Apakaboro.
Where?
OJ, OJ, Barry Apakaboro.
Where?
Come, 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 I hope I got it right, pardon me, I, I, yeah. Yeah, thank you so much. You know, for this bold step that you've taken to come out and then associate yourself with Diaphra France. Yes, so we have forty states of Diaphra France and we are still waiting for other states to come up. I saw my, hey, our APM, Aram Bayinam, the Punisher, we appreciate you. Yes, they were saying that Diaphra France don't like you, but in this period, we have seen so many states emerging to come and hold their town hall meeting.
Yes.
That means we love you, Diaphra France, love you, but some dark agent of darkness blocked them from identifying when they were there, but immediately they left, the light started shining and penetrated into the heart of every Diaphra France, and that is why you have seen what is happening. We all love you. We love you. Don't mind the English, we will speak for you, we are your children. Kaliwali English, English is not our language. Did it to hear how the, the person that read that address spoke good English? We are all here to speak English for our APM. Yes, so I saw my Tiana here and I want to also acknowledge our Edwobi Fia, Apa Fia of Diaphra Land. Hey, the Honourable His Excellency Soni Akbarawa and all the ministers that are present here, all the cabinet members of Apakaboro State. I've also seen Madame Ki, Gigi, and our Honourable Bishop Comfort, all of you, I said kudos for coming around to celebrate with Apakaboro. I want to support my to pick cola with them. I heading drop five thousand, I want to make it a round figure of twenty thousand, so add fifteen thousand to him and I'll send it directly to him. Thank you so much. So Tiana have picked a, and the cola with twenty thousand AJ in total.
Uh, God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, the next person, Minister of Finance. Minister Forma, over to you.
Wow. Hey. Especially our beloved APM. Yes. Our honourable Minister of Finance. Well done, sir. And all the cabinet members, I greet all of you. Uh, I want to thank the admin of Apakaboro for the bold step he took. May God bless you. I'm supporting with the sum of two thousand AJ. One.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Now, I want Bakoro, Bakoro Son. Bakoro Son, are you back in the Zoom? Bakoro Son, unmute yourself now. Bakoro Son, unmute yourself. Bakoro Son, unmute yourself.
I'm not sure he's back in his zone, maybe he's back to the
He's back here. Yeah, Bakoro Son, unmute yourself. I'm sending you the mic, check your screen, you see? And I said, the host wants you to unmute.
Fun. And I want to Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead.
Infinex, go ahead. Infinex, Infinex, go ahead.
Okay, good evening to everyone, good evening to our APM, good evening to all Diaphra that is here. Um, Oye Badi, Akbaro.
Where?
Oye Badi, Samabangi. Where? Oye Badi, Tagu Diaphra. Where? Um, I'm doing same, she a Bagboro State. Minister of Transportation to Diaphra State. So and in the moment, he donate two thousand AJ ma, to support the Diaphra movement. As I did, because we know.
Thank you.
Um, Infinex, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Thank you. Uh, Bakoro Son cannot unmute, I think he's having issues with his mic. And he wrote a message and said, he's breaking the code not with two thousand AJ. And he said, I am Oroku County Chairman in Apakaboro. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we come to, uh, ETL A six, sorry. Over to you.
My special regards to our indomitable Acting Prime Minister, the person of the right honourable Ogeng Kere. My special regards to all Brigi Cabinet's members here present in this meeting. My special regards to all homeland admins. Especially my immediate boss, the head of the Exeter Region, who happened to be our host for today. I said, may God bless all of us in the name of Jesus Christ. I believe I remain God's will affair. I have tried to make amendment for this title in six, six three, you have seen there, but from my gadget here, I am unable, so I am God's will affair. Uh, I'm here representing two states tonight. Of course, I'm representing my state, Ikong State De Fato. Uh, I'm also presenting Anyoma State's De Fato. Uh, the admin, Dr. Innocent Ukafo was here during the time, we have technical issues. Uh, before we can get to, uh, he is now unable to return himself back. Uh, but he has placed a call on me, uh, to support the cola on behalf of the Anyoma people uh, with five thousand AJ ma. And so that is to be coming from Anyoma State's De Fato, five thousand AJ ma, we are supporting that cola. And from Ikong State De Fato, we are also supporting this traditional cola note with two thousand AJ ma. I also want to use this noble opportunity, please, to put up a special invitation orally and that on the twenty fourth day of August, I will be hosting you. It could be my pleasure to have this complete house to create this wonderful awareness to the people of Ikong. And I say shalom from here, thank you from here.
He said, darlo.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, God's will. We are all invited to Ikong State Town Hall meeting, that is coming up, thank you. All right, we come to, uh, COA, COA Lagos License, over to you.
Okay, greetings to everyone from, um, our APM, Odogunoke, Honourable Oggechonke, to all the officials of Diaphra Government, both in exile and De Fato in homeland, I greet everyone. I greet also all Diaphra France of goodwill who have gathered tonight to ensure that the project of Diaphra Restoration is in progress. Greetings to everyone very specially, it is my pleasure always. First of all, I want to correct one impression from one of my senior comrades about Lagos. Lagos is a laze, not a state. That is it. And I want to use this opportunity to urge every Diaphra France to study the names of our states. It is very important and know them so that you can be pronouncing them properly. Uh, it is not encouraging that names like Apakaboro, someone who is enlightened is not equally enlightened in terms of knowing the names of our state. Um, I want to celebrate with my people of, um, Apakaboro State. I love everyone. And hopefully, by the end of this meeting, I don't know, Minister of Information, if I'm mistaken, correct me. Uh, it is a thought that our APM has embarked on and it is going around. I don't know if it is after this meeting, uh, we take the battle from Apakaboro State to Okus State. So in the end of this meeting, I want to know, sir. So having said all this, I want to take the cola with five thousand AJ. And there were, I love everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Chukwakike. Bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much, okay. Uh, I think the flyer for for Okus State is out already. Wait, let me from far.
Yes, the flyer is, the flyer is out.
Okay, the flyer is out, so that is on the twentieth, yeah. Twenty, yeah. Well, um, Ikong is on the twenty-four, okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Diaphra Best, over to you.
Okay. My is Soni Abadawa. He, 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 he are chopa moku. He doesn't say they, he, he, he are Ibo small, small, but you pretend as if you know they are Ibo. He are chopa moku.
He got the royal tattoo on the tire.
Okay.
Hello, okay, very much.
All right, Minister Comfort. Okay, all right, so I've come up to make my own donation. Um, I greet the house, everybody I greet here, I've greeted, uh, our honourable, um, His Excellency. Yes, please, Mike, it's on. Can I go on? All right. Okay, so I'm, um, I'm taking the cola note with, um, let me, um, with hundred AJ ma, please.
So I will to Okus State.
I'm sending to Minister Pity.
Ifu, ifu.
All right. Yeah.
Downloading it.
Yeah, I'll send the receipt to Minister Pity. Download, huh?
This, no, no. Okay, thank you, uh, Diaphra Best, thank you.
He has given a hundred, under, um.
Yeah. Thank you so much. We are going to sing for all of you. Let us pick all the hands first because we started late, so we're trying to compromise the time. And Miriamah, over to you. Madame Ki.
Ki on Apakaboro.
Hey, thank you, uh, Miriamah, over to you, Miriamah, you're not ready?
Yeah. Miriamah is
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. How's this on, I greet you all. Uh, Diaphra Best, I greet you too, my honourable. For long, not have your voice, but as you talk now, I decode your voice. I want to greet my APM. I send I swear to my CIP. I want to greet you wherever you are coming from. So, um, this, uh, program this evening, our brother in Apakaboro. I'm supporting you people with the five thousand AJ. Because we are we are in the same region. God bless you all, I'm doing that to support you. Good night.
There were. Um, thank you, I will make sure, over to you.
All right, all right, and there were, thanks to everyone. Uh, greetings to our APM, Mazy Ogeng Kere, our Information Minister Mazy Abarawa, all the cabinet members, I thank you all. Um, without wasting much time, I want to support the people of Apakaboro with fifty AJ ma. So, uh, Mazy Abarawa, can I send it to you? The receipt? Hello?
Yeah, Minister of Information, are you there?
Yes, why don't you, you can send it over to me, thank you.
Okay, okay, there were, thank you.
Uh, we have, uh, Noye, Noye, over to you. And please, the reps and admins that need your camera on, you can turn it on now, I'll co-host you all. Reps and admins, I will make sure, you may turn your camera on. On a blog here, you may turn your camera, you need. I will now here, you may turn your camera on if you need. Okay, I will, Chima is there. I will now here, you may turn your camera on if you need. I will now, go ahead, you have the mic.
All right, thank you so much, um, Minister Barawa. I don't need my camera on for now. Um, greetings to our leaders, Mazinam Dekano, our PM, Mazzy Simon Epa, and our APM, Mazy Oggechonke. And all the Brigi Cabinet members who are here today, I greet all of you. From our BDF to our media team led by Honourable Sonia Akbarawa. All the Brigi officials, reps, admins, homeland officials, Diaphra France in Apakaboro. All the moms and dads in the house, I greet all of you. Genuine Diaphra France, may peace and blessings of the Chukwakabi Amabio to all of you. So, uh, today, I'm welcoming our APM to Apakaboro with thirty AJ ma. And enough ten AJ ma for, for me is pronouncing Apakaboro yesterday at the fundraiser. And then ten AJ ma on behalf of Okwe State, so that makes it fifty AJ ma for today. And I'll send the receipt to Honourable Akbarawa. There were, thank you, everybody.
There were, thank you, Honourable Noye.
Thank you, man, thank you, Honourable Latch.
Thank you, Honourable Noye, thank you. And we we have Ezebin Abiaphra One, unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you very much, my Honourable Minister of Information, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciation to my people of Apakaboro, uh, and welcome to my honourable Acting Prime Minister and everybody. Also, I send my greetings to my State Admin, Mazy Onyezi, Ower State Admin, for representing the people of Ower. Um, I want to use this, uh, this opportunity, uh, to present also the people of, uh, Abombis State County with five AJ. Uh, and that's Abatobi, Madu One, also I want to represent the people of Abastate and Adoka State with five thousand AJ, in total sum of ten thousand AJ. There were.
That would be an effort.
Oh, thank you, thank you. There were, there were, there were, thank you, Zebina. Thank you. Um, we come to Honourable Chima, yes, sir.
Okay. And there were no, uh, welcome everybody.
Oh, I'm sorry, which one is, uh, Apakaboro, what is that, which one is that?
It's one of the states, one of the states of the forty states of Diaphra in the homeland.
Yeah, I know, which, which area is that? From the It's one One of the states that was Oh, and then Aquaibom? Yeah, 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 yeah. That's what you call, Oron, Oron is a, is a corrupted version of the The pronunciation is Oron, it pretty hard to end to the O R O N, make it Oron, or you just call Oron. That's the indigenous name.
Oh, I know that area, I know, I know a wet house, and I've been, I've been there for a bit then. Ah, okay. Okay, so let's, uh, support uh, this, our neighbours, uh, on behalf of our state and Onyezi. Any support with, uh, five hundred thousand AJ, but I will, I'll send it in dollars. Five hundred thousand Aj, but I, I'll be, I'll send it in dollars, I'll give uh somebody. There was.
Hmm. Thank you, Maz, uh Mazy Chima.
Thank you, Mazy Chima.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chima, thank you so much for your support, thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh. Maybe, maybe former Alanso admin, over to you, unmute yourself.
Yeah, good evening.
There were.
Can I? Good evening, everyone.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, my, please, my network is checking. On where I am, that wasting time, on behalf of my state, Alanso State. We are picking um, the cola with a sum of five thousand Aj. Thank you so much, APM, welcome to Apakiboro State, thank you.
There were. Thank, thank you, Wachunaka, thank you, thank you, Alanso.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe some information, please, one minute, please, I just received a message here. That she should bring to everyone notice, I don't know, just send this. Someone just say, good evening, your excellency. We in the event department are here to receive your list of commander of your state. Give your. State commander's name and phone number, so we can reach out to them directly for any information or meeting. Moreover, the time is almost the. To collaborate with your state.
Don't read it, don't read it again, don't read it again, ignore that, ignore that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
You get it, all right, all right.
Yeah, you are part of the fourth estate of Biafra, the homeland is under the supervision of the defense, so. Uh, you get every instruction from Minister Soff says. Via the Defense Council, so don't adhere to any messages that comes anyhow, thank you so much. All right, we move, um, we come to. Honorable Chine. You is not in South America, Deputy Rep, over to you.
All right, greetings, everyone. Uh. Mommy Komfo, today, okay, Nicky Mary.
Adam Mama.
Hello ma.
Where I, where have you been?
Nah, I've been so busy, I stayed work. And school, and family, everything, everything. Oh, sorry, uh, my mind is still anyways, um, I greet them. Uh, honorable APM, honorable Gechukunkere. Um, I'm the CK, Dalunorinaro. We love the guys. And then we thank, I wanna thank uh. Honorable. But I was sunny. My prof, how are you? How is your family, everybody doing okay?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're. We miss you plenty.
I know, I miss you guys too, you guys please pardon me, you know, it just so much commitment. Just trying to divide myself into one hundred pieces, anyway. It is well, it is well, um, I thank God for all of you here, and um. And I, I greet my honorables in the house. And then, um. Thank you to. All Biafrans. Genuine Biafrans, who have been carrying out. This honorable assignment. You know, and I pray that by the grace of God, we are almost there, right? So my special salute goes to our BDF. Omuchineke. Yeah, eh, I, I. Keep telling people, anyone is. Is against our golden angels, is of Lani born. Take it to the bank, and I. Also want to let every Biafran know. That without the F, there is no freedom. If you like, you gossip from morning till night. If you are not with BDF. F, you've just lost your. Nobody can give you freedom. Except to come our BDF. So you all get focus and support. Our golden angels, down there, they are the ones that are, you know, doing the, the doings. And. And I wanna. Give us our website, just. Just in case, you visit you dot. Dot, Biafra Public Governments. Dot org. Also. Bill and pay. Is Biafra dot org. Org at gmail dot com. I encourage every Biafran to go there and do the meaningful. We are almost. To our destination, please, Omuchineke. This is the right time. To do your donation. With your little, little Ajema. We move mountains, right? You know, our leaders did not give up, so. Sitting on the fence cannot bring you Biafra. If you are still sitting on the fence, acting confused, stop deceiving yourself, there is nothing to be confused about. And you holding your money. Cannot help you, and cannot help your generation, the only thing that can help you is to go make your donation. You're not making it for anyone, but for you and for your generation to be free. For how long are we gonna be called slaves? For how long are we gonna? Be scattered all over the world? For long are we gonna be expecting other people to give us freedom? Like our APM always say, freedom is in our hands. It's up to you and I to do little that we make, you know, nothing too big, nothing too small, but if you have it big. You are more than welcome, we also have a IOU uh program going on. We encourage you to please, you know, um, find a way to get involved. You know, because all of these things are also for your own freedom. So we thank everybody, thank all our honorable defector governments. Our brothers and sisters. And also to our own, um. Our own. Uh, Sonia, how do you say that name again, sorry. Uh, Apa, Apbarikan?
Akbaroro, Akbaroro.
Apbarikan.
Don't worry, if you, if you kill the name, if you kill the name, you can pay fine, no wala. I need a.
He wants to kill it.
I like the name, oh honestly, I like the name, it's so unique. But, 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 but we are all the same.
Apakip, Apa, Apakip, Apakip Oro.
Apakip, Apakip Oro, yeah. Apakip. Yeah.
Combination of the different N D group that are made of Oro. And they are, yeah. We have the Okob, we have the Mbo, we have the Ibo Goton, we have the Asa, Iwa. And then, and there is Akpa Keep, is group of the six N D group that are made of the Oro people.
Okay, I see, Apakiporo. Okay, I got it now, I got it, thank you for that explanation, and thank you for hosting us today. Eh, without making long speeches, I just wanna uh use that, that. Ten thousand Aj, our APM drinking water. Uh huh, so he can relax a little bit. So APM just take it, we are right behind you, oh, hmm. So, I, I also pray.
You give me a forty, cause it was.
Yes, okay, yes, I, I accept, I'm not shaking, I can open. I can, hey, yes. Yes, I, I'm, I'm the Biafran queen, so I can open. Therefore, forty thousand Aj, Aj, eh huh. So, um, I just pray that uh by the grace of God, we are expecting our. MNK and our prime minister to be out by the grace of God. And I pray today that in the name of Chukwokikabiama, they must be out. No matter what the enemy is planning. Their plans were twisted and destroyed. And victory is our portion. Whoever is standing against the freedom of Omuchineke. Whoever that is standing to be a saboteur against the freedom of Biafra. May that passing fall and never rise again. Whoever that is holding our leaders hostage, oh my God, my Lord, I pray. That you will begin now to torture them and to destroy them. Whatever that gives them joy, let their joy turn to sorrow, in the mighty name of Chukwokikabiama. And I thank you, Jesus God Almighty, for my brothers and my sisters who are donating. And I pray, oh God Almighty, that you will bless their pockets, bless them with good health, bless them with everything. Thank you, God, for our APM or God, thank you, oh Lord, for everything that concerns him. Father Lord, will begin to ask for your grace, your wisdom, and your, your power over him, in mighty name of Jesus. I thank you, brothers and sisters, and I say, let us. Move with one law, it is well with us. In the mighty name of Chukwokikabiama. He say, he say, he say, Dalunor.
He say.
God bless you.
Uh, he say, thank you, thank you, thank you. No worry. We come to, eh, only the God of creation, only the God of creation, unmute yourself, good number.
Yeah. Thank you so much, honorable minister for information, thank you, and um. It's a good number, I greet my honorable, uh, my honorable APM. Uh, Mazyogin Kere, his excellency. And then. All the ministers, admins, and then the governors, and then my ladies and comrades. Yes, uh before I go on, I want to, I want to buy time. In the fundraising here, we should be selling time. Okay, I want to buy time, and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that time will be sold. Yes, anybody who want to take talk, who wants to speak, prepare for the time, so I'm buying two minutes. With the ten thousand Aj, before I will come and take cola first, I want to say something, two minutes with ten thousand Aj. Uh huh, there's something I want to correct, okay, please.
Uh, Maz, Maz is a good number, that two minutes for ten thousand, I don't think. Uh, or one minute. One minute, one minute for ten thousand, okay?
Okay, sir, accepted, 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 we'll be selling time, okay, yeah, accepted, let me use that one minute. For the time, if you want to use more, you can add it, yeah, so there's something, please, if you look at this name now, this is Apakiporo. You see that, the, if you want to write in your.
To interrupt you, honorable minister for information, are you counting the minute? Yes, I'm counting, eh, I think five, five seconds is gone already.
I'm also counting, APM, don't worry, I'm counting for you.
So. Before writing in here. Please, please allow me, please, okay, please, but look at that, that care.
Eh, you. Wait, wait, some people don't chop from your minute, so you have to start afresh, so that they don't chop into your minute. Anybody, anybody chop into your minute, you, you go, make the person pay. Uh huh, pay extra. Uh, go ahead.
I want to, how united we are, and how all of us are same. That there, if you want to write that Apakip in your, but DK will not be the only P you see, okay? But you want to write it, you see that entire Biafranland will put it K there, that is one again. I want to come and say, because they're my region, because they're my neighbor, please. Work make us united is Biafra, and in this five ancient tribe that come to make us together, Abada, Idu, Uri. Eh, O, O, Oru, and Isu, we are one united, that is the foundation that our ancestors, please, we have to support that division, okay? Please, we, I'm here from Odmebu State, and I'm here as a Biafran to support my, eh, my brother state, my sister state, okay? So I am giving uh, on behalf of Odmebu State, I am using uh thirty thousand Aj to take cola notes. On behalf of Odmebu State, and so, another twenty thousand Aj to represent my family, including the, the time, that is fifty thousand Aj, thank you so much, good number.
Thank you, thank you, Wachunaka, thank you, thank you, thank you. That was, that was very smart.
Right on time, right one, I was timing, he knows me, I would time him very well, one minute of the dot. He's a very clever guy.
Thank you, good, good number, I, I smited all of you today with time. Thank you so much, eh, all right, Jenny. Honorable Jenny Yama, over to you, then next person is uh, Honorable OK, Jenny Yama, over to you.
Um, mute, okay. I come to the take and you.
Come through. Amazing.
I'm welcoming every one of you that has come to Ak, uh, is it Ak, Ak, Ak?
Akbaroro. Akbaro. Akbaro. Akbaro.
Akbaro. Bigboro.
Akbaro, state.
Akbaro State, I welcome the APM, the, yeah, and I welcome all his entourage. I have to thank you people for the good work you are doing. At least those of us abroad here are very confident with the, the present team. I will try as much as possible to cooperate and join hands and put whatever we have. On behalf of Ikong State. I'm. Supporting my neighbors, neighboring state with thirty Ajima. And I'll send the receipt to Sonia Akbarawa, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Jenny, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, all right, we come to Honorable OK.
Eh, sorry, eh, Minister, eh, Minister Akbarawa, update please from eh John, I forgot. John eh started the fundraising today with a hundred thousand Aj, you know the John I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, John.
Yeah, so please, put it down, hundred thousand Aj from John, thank you.
Thank you, John.
John, John from New Jersey, thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you, Honorable OK, go ahead. So, uh, thank you very much, um, so, uh, Apakiporo, man mano. Whoa, wait. Apakiporo, man mano. Oui.
Oui.
Apakiporo, mano. Oui. Yes, uh, we should not forget that we are in cola breaking, let's say, uh, we are eating cola. And then, and the cola breaking is unanimous, it's a universal, so, uh, that is what makes it uh different. Uh, thank you very much, eh, you are welcome, Honorable APM. Honorable, eh, Information Minister, and there were, our modern the house, and there were. Ministers, cabinet members, and the Biafrans. You know, you are all welcome to the occasion. So, without wasting time, I, I, about cola note, I will support uh, uh, Aludo. Uh, I wanted to send it before the officer did not react, so I will add uh thirty Ajema to the Aludo. Um, Aludo, eh, donation earlier, and so, uh, Honorable Na Mark, I will send you the receipt so that you, eh, post it all together at the same time. So, eh, extra thirty, eh, Ajema, eh, for Aludo to pick cola notes today from our, our brothers. Welcome, thank you, and also honorable minister, like somebody asked before, eh, don't forget that Aludo is next, next week, please. So the button, eh, is uh.
It's Sunday.
Aludo, yes, and next week, uh, seventeenth. And I, I, I sent you a message for the flyer, we haven't gotten it, please, and we'll need it maybe, eh, as, as soon as possible. Aludo flyer was, was it not out long before now? No.
Not out yet.
I will check, I will check. Yeah. Uh, thank you very much, thank you, you are all welcome, we are one, we are happy, please, so we will adopt, if you miss the name again, fine. You pay fine, that's our brother say. Uh, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, all right, eh, we come to. Uh, Nenaya Okereke. Our honorable from Italy, Lizen, over to you.
There. Nde wono, nde wono, Nde Akpa Keep Oro. Nde wono, everyone is welcome, so.
You're only, you're only very, very well not to receive any fine, yeah.
Eh, I'm an Igbo woman, so I supposed to, and my neighbors, because I was born and brought up in Naba. So I am supporting what that being today with fifty Ajema, I will send the receipt to Mazyaparawa. Nde, this is the Ika that.
Thank you, 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 all right, we come to our honorable Canada rep. Kashmiah, over, over to you, sir.
They were watching the game.
But however, we'll have to speak the ones we can understand and quickly. Okay, lem, game, they were, it is too much. APM, the mighty man of valor, they were. They were welcome. Somebody brought yesterday, oh, you know, who there, I said, get, okay, and I, we, we, and I, ah, 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 eh, eh, bu, ah, 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 white house. Yeah, all the, you know, members of the cabinet and the brigio personnel, I greet every one of you. Uh, our mama, and they were, anytime I see you, I seen the chair in the house, I bless you. I bless you, uh, Ahorum Olopa, Olopa, I bless you too. Uh, there's no, there's no time, everybody, I, I communicate, I see you, I bless every one of you. Tutos, I do not know, you're washing hand like pilot. Are you washing off your hand from order? Now, thank you, uh, Canada, we have come, and we want to support our people, this is the same thing we are doing. Uh, and we continue to do it, we, uh, 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 giving hundred Ajima. Yeah, this Roger, for today, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Canada, thank you, Machinake, thank you so, so much, thank you, we come to. They were, we come to Hefion and Women. Hefion and Women, over to you.
Uh, especially leader of Biafra, Mazinam the Cano. I believe in this, this year. Our, uh, main. PM, Simon Eba, I believe so much is really is here. And they are working with us as the two legs of the goods. That always match in the same spot of the, you know, legs. In fact, that is how I always figure in. Our, in fact, the Minister of Information, and Supreme Governor of Magwell State. Which I ever remain to deputize him and work according to his own directive. In fact, first and foremost, I want to humbly tender my very unreserved apology to the Biafrans. Over the delay, in fact, I really, I can't, up to this moment that I joined this meeting. Network in the Zoological Republic was extremely bad in my own sight. I tried by all means, in fact, in initial stage, I joined the meeting before they started interrupted me. I couldn't even got anything till my phone went off. In fact, it was extremely so difficult for me to join the, the meeting. I'm extremely sorry for everything I have done, or I, I, in fact, I took the blame upon myself. I'm very, very sorry, I believe my humble apology is accepted. So, I, I welcome everyone to Abakbora. I welcome our APM to Abakbora, I welcome all the national industrial to the Abakbora. May our God bless all of you. And I want to just say, I will bring my color with a sum of ten thousand era. In fact, because the, the hat that we have for Biafra is extremely numerous. Our mother's here, our father's here, they embrace Abakbora with the whole of their heart. Nothing shall by any means make us to go back to Zoological Republic, those zoo. We can't go back to them, and I pray for every of us that is here today. That the evils that follows the zoo should not match with us to this hour. If I land of Kenya, the Biafra land, the rising sun, the place that God has blessed, full of honey and egg. May God bless all of us, thank you very much, thank you very much, thank you very, very much, thank you extremely.
Yeah, thank you so much, um, PM, my good people of Biafra. That is the Deputy Administrator of Abakbora State, in being the wonderful comrade, a very committed comrade so far. He's further, was an ex- soldier of Biafra Hami in the war. And thank you for making yourself available and for your donation, and may God bless you, Minister of Information, over to you, sir.
Thank you, uh, our deputy admin, Honorable Hefion. We go to, uh, Freedom for All, Freedom for All, over to you.
Yeah. Good evening, happy Sunday. Um, on behalf of, uh, Ezadi. And on behalf of my family, I'm donating the sum of fifty thousand AJ. Yeah, I will, I will send the receipt across to our, our UK rep. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Freedom for All, thank you so much, thank you. Okay, we come to. We come to, uh, Minister of Interior. Honorable, uh, Experience, over to you.
Okay, thank you so much, I mean, so for information, and, uh, our APM. At the Prime Minister, I greet you everyone, other protocol observed. Thank you for this wonderful day like this. And, uh, I must tell you that we are so much happy. Almighty God have proved himself that he is God. But I cannot say, I want to thank all the admins. And all the representative of each states, who have heard all the calls that will cut to them. And many of them in this, in this town hall meetings. And I must tell you that the jars have broken. And it can only get better. We are looking forward to have other state town hall meetings. Which, uh, about three states have become fun now. No who states would have that town hall meetings, unprinted. It comes it also on twenty fourths. We are looking also to see. Other states.
Aludo on seventeen, Aludo on seventeenth. Yeah, just confirm, I'm able now, Aludo on seventeenth.
Okay, thank you so much. Endeavor to inform also that we will inform all the executive of each state to represent you. And, uh, we sincerely thanks all the lovers of freedom who pay attention for this call that homeland called them. And today, we have shielded free and enemies fighting.
Yes.
Impossible, we make it possible. And you see, for this movement. And this is the first time that Akbari Boros is having their town hall meeting.
Yes.
Take courage to move this mountain, and by the, by the name of God, the mountain moving.
Yes.
And those that are stay behind and watching how it's going to be. Man cannot do it, but Elohim can do it with the.
Oh, Jesus.
A plant and a human.
Oh, Jesus.
God have proved himself, and will continue on moving forwards. And every other state admin who have not done yet. We know, so, but in the future times. It may be something who stand against you. And it's a path of awareness, because if that means that. That means there's something that you're hiding behind. And I must appreciate our beloved brothers and sisters in our lives. Who also are here today to support Abakiboro States, Abakbora States. With love, with kindness, with joy, you see, moving forwards. We are not here to show shoulder with anybody, but we are here to do what Elohim have proved us to do.
Yes.
And we are doing it. So, everything things that are here, and if you find out that your states have not conducted their town hall meetings. Please, all the state admin accountable. And asking question why you have not done so. If eventually that your state admin have not done so, then you can chat us privately. Because this thing is what this Madame Baba have done past. In the sense that is covering some state admins in some areas. Which if you try to ask her or ask them why, then we said why I attack them. We don't know that this woman was using this for preparing for another mission.
Yeah.
But in a time like this, it's not going to work again. And I must tell you that, Akbari Boros State, that is already John. And by the special reasons, out of state that make history regions. About six states have conducted the attack meeting. And we are looking other region to do so. On behalf of, uh, my executive, I'm supporting Akbari Boros in a sum of ten thousand. Thank you so much, and we are looking for this crowd that is here. To meet us once again on seventeenth and twenty third and twenty fourth of this month. And we believe by the sacred grace of God, we do it better, and it can only get better, thank you so much.
Thank you, Experience.
Thank you, thank you, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Machinake, um, where is the voice, the voice, are you there?
Yes.
Yeah, you needed the mic, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, the Minister of Information, it don't make something, it come, it don't make something. Um, special greeting to our Supreme Leader, Martinam the Cano. The man who came for a purpose, the man who came to save his people. I greet you especially from my end, special greeting to the Prime Minister, Biafra Government in exile. Special greeting to the acting Prime Minister presence. Special greeting to all the honorable in the house, all the ministers, Biafrans and lovers of freedom. I greet you, especially our mothers in this today meeting, I really appreciate you for coming to support us. Um, before I go forward, I let me just, um, welcome my people or contribute. To this color picking, um, I welcome my APM. With the, uh, Ajima. Uh, for today town hall meeting. And, um, I want to give this opportunity to also, uh. Say some few things, that today we are here, to me, I don't really see it as a town hall meeting, it is beyond a town hall meeting. I am saying it that Biafra is life in Abakbora State, the reasons are so many. Uh, some years back, thousand and one, two thousand and two, when some delicate were sent to come. For the arrangement or consult the people concerning the state creation. The first batch of the state was created, Abakbora was not involved. So, Abakbora today came through struggle, Abakbora today came through fight. And we fought because it was a true fight, we fight with all our hearts. All sincerity, with all faithfulness in our heart, and as God will have. Our PM listened to us, the first we stayed that was created was Idungibom States. Leandang States and Waikiki States, and we say no, we deserve to be a state. And this very distinctive you are seeing today, and the leadership of Abakbora you are seeing today, were the people that make it happen. It wouldn't have happened, Abakbora wouldn't have been here today, but we came together, we said no. We deserve to have a state on our own, we deserve to be a state on our own, when we were trying to put the information forward. This evil woman, Madame Baba, did not allow our information to go through, but as God will have it. Our PM later heard our voice, and he told us what to do, he told us to do this and do that, then I will know what to do, which we did. And Abakbora was among the last batch of states that announced or made it forty thou, forty United States of Biafra. So, Abakbora today is a miraculous state, we are loving people. You know, some people are still asking, where is this Abakbora located, please, I wanted to listen at this point. There will be no support in the ghost, there will be no support in the ghost, without the ship to pass. There will be no support anywhere, as long as they will pass through Biafra land, they have to pass through Abakbora State. Abakbora State are blessed, those who knows it, knows it, if you want to go to any country through the sea, you have to pass through Abakbora State. Abakbora State is a border, it is very important for us to know this. Abakbora State is just like, as you have Inugu, which is in the border, as you have other place like Eboni. Or Anambra, you can see the location over there, we have learned, based on what happened to us, some years. Nineteen sixty seven and seventy, we cannot forget the nori, on how we were bombing school, how we were bombing church in the market. So for this reason, we have taken our step to know how to defend that border. It is our collective effort to come together and protect Abakbora State, because it's a seaboard. You can remember when they said that it sold some part of Biafra land to Cameroon. It was because they managed to do evil. For in that border, and that was how it come in, and before that time, Biafra Hami were holding them down, Biafra Hami were on them. Biafra Hami were giving them, were having victory, recorded victory over them at that time. But it was when they now, you know, they, they now go and made the Camerons, and they now sold some part of the lands to them. And as we speak, Bakasi Peninsula is in one of the county in Abakbora State. It is very important, many of us know where Abakbora State is located, it is very, very important. Please, I'd so much appreciate all of you are present here today to support us. We are not here to follow other people's history, we are here to create history, we are here to write our own Bible, that is what we are doing. We want to tell our story by ourselves, we don't want anybody to tell our story. Abakbora has been in the struggle of Biafra for many years, even when we came on board, since two thousand and twelve, thirteen, fourteen, some of our elders said. Oh, my children, we are being in this struggle before you people, and they pray for us, and they ask us to be worshipful. And they give us their advice, and they give us their blessing, from then, since then, we have been very active. There is no protest in the Biafra land that Abakbora's indigenous, indigenous people, people have not been involved. Being a boy or a girl, a man or a woman, we are being in all the protests, like the protests that we know. That set me in the Mbo, at the Anabra, we were there live, another protest in Aba High School. Another protest in Abba High School where. Biafra were killed, Akbari Boror were there alive. All the protests in Igwacha were there alive, we all. All the protests in Onicharhe Bridge, we always follow up. So for many of you who are here, you may not really know how far we have gone. Down to the time of our PM, we also follow up. We were doing the lot of assignment our PM give to us before the enemy came to interrupt. But we believe that our PM will come back to meet us again. Please, my brothers and sister, I'm so much happy that many of you came up today to support us. And I believe that Biafra is going to be restored. We have a very, um. A, a good meeting, we are going to review to the whole world. And I want to also tell you now. Our leader said something some years back. He said the beginning of creation is in Biafran land. And that place in the very Biafran land. When times come, we are going to lead the whole world to see the place. They also talk about the Garden of Eden. I want to let the whole world know now. There is no Garden of Eden in the, in Europe, there is no Garden of Eden in the Asia. There is no Garden of Eden in any part of the whole world. The Garden of Eden is in Biafran land. We are ready, we are ever ready to lead the whole world to win the mystery of the Almighty. We are not in nori, we are not walking into social media, we are walking the way our leader. Have instructed us to walk and we are doing wonderful well. With a little liability and a little finance that God be able to help us. I also want to use this opportunity to interpret the meaning of Akbari. And the meaning of Ora. Akbari mean the group, a group, a multiple group of people coming together, a group. Now, Ora mean knowing those who know things, we know. We know it from the beginning, before you think we know. That is why sometime we are very, very. Angry with some people who come to look down on us. That sometime we are very angry, like what we did to Nkosi. We wrote official letter to distance ourselves from her and her group. We've done that several time. So Akbari Boror State, I want all of us to know the important, the reason why we should protect Akbari Boror State. But I want to give you an foreign information, we told our people that Fulani is coming some years ago. And they were laughing at us. As I speak now, last month, some voice note is coming out from here and there. That Fulani have already settled in the five local government in Akbari Boror State. They have settled everywhere and what their target is to strike. And we have made this known to our people and our peoples are waking up. So we are not giving up, we are not backing down, we would know, we would do what we know best to do. Another thing I want to say is this, I want to also use this opportunity to interpret the meaning of our Father. Our Father, I am interpreting this, it is our language and I want to make it known to some of us who are here. Please. For those who are coming into the struggle with the mind of betraying or the mind of taking us backward or the mind of doing evil. Listen to this, our Father is not your mates. Our Father is the leading compass, led due to the final destination where is the storm in the high sea. Our Father is the Almighty. Our Father is Okike. Our Father is Akbari Nidok. Our Father is Chukoki Kabiyama. This is what people must understand. Our Father, I am giving the meaning of our Father in our dialect, what it mean? It mean Almighty, who is leading you during the time of storm in high sea. When the storm is blowing in the high sea, you will not use engine, you will not use anything. The first thing that comes to your mind as a fisherman or as a sailor, it is the our Father. Then you blow out our Father and put it in your, in your boat or your ship. Then the thing will lead you directly to your final destination. So who is our Father? Our Father is the Almighty himself, is the wind, is the water, is everything. For those of you who are pretending to work as seriously, but you are thinking, you are doing other people good, you are doing evil to yourself. Because nobody can betray the Almighty. Nobody can look down on Almighty, there is a price, the price is there to pay. So, brother, thank you very much. A special greeting once again to the Akbari Boror State. Uh, Administrator and his deputy, I thank you so much for what you have been doing. You have been listening to your people because one of the tasks and the thing the leader should do is to listen to his follower. But when the leader refuse to listen to his follower, I mean such leader does not know where he or she is going. I so much appreciate you.
There was. What's up, thank you.
Alright, alright, thank you, sir. Um, please, I thank everybody for coming to Akbari Boror. Akbari Boror, we are happy people. And um, I believe through this very uh town hall meeting, other states will rise up to do the needful. Thank you and may God bless you. I stand by. Akbari Boror State Media Director.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mas. Thank you, thank you. We go to Victor answer, over to you. Victor answer, you have the mic.
Okay. Mic can be now, please.
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright. Uh, greetings, uh, my fellow Biafrans. All over the world as we have gathered tonight for this uh wonderful and. It's great meeting. And uh. Before I go forward, please permit me, I'm going to make it very brief. Uh, you know, as for those people who thinks that uh what we are doing is uh maybe. We are just uh call gathering whenever we gather to, to donate funds for our defense and for recognition, it seems like no. So, but today I got a call. You know, a life witness, this one was uh from my own dad. It happens to be that uh he traveled home. You know, um, all this way has been traveling, though he had this experience once. But uh this very second one was the one that made him to, to call me. And uh was telling me about his experience of what he experienced uh of recently. And uh he was uh also very, very, very happy about the experience. So, and this experience is just simply that, you know, on his way uh home. The uh, it happened that uh. Um. He, 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 he bought into the uh Biafran Liberation Army. You know, the Biafran Defense Forces, you know, and uh. And unfortunately, they, they led him. And uh, they, they told him that uh the only thing that he should just do for them is just for him to be praying for them. So, and uh they also told him that uh, you know, if we are not here, you know, that uh the Fulani is, the invaders. Of which he's aware of, you know, will take over these places. So, and I told him that, yes, I Chukoki Kabiyama, that it was the Biafran Liberation Army that you ran into. Because if it was the Nigerian terrorist state, even though it is the one in uniform or the one in red tag. I don't know what I would have been, you know, talking about today. So I just want to say uh thank you very much for each and every one of us because it is all our contributions. That uh, you know, are brought about this testimony that I'm giving here. So we might look at it somehow, but uh, you know, I thank Chukoki Kabiyama, these are part of the sacrifices. That we all should ought to do because we don't know who might be the next person, we don't know what might happen. If Biafran Defense Forces or the Biafran Liberation Army are not really, you know, intact, you know, protecting our land. I don't know what would have been the story by now. So for that reason, uh, um, without wasting much of our time. I'm going to support today's town hall meeting with fifty A Jema. Then uh for the uh good work of the Biafran Defense Forces and each and every one of us. I'm also going to add uh fifty A Jema to what I have uh already given. So I will send the receipt uh immediately uh to uh Marzis Sonia, or I will send it to Auntie Kiruka as usual. Thank you very much, with Chukoki Kabiyama, bless each and everyone of us, thank you.
Hello.
Very well, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We come to Freedom for Biafra, Freedom for Biafra and Meet Yourself.
Yeah, hello, good evening, Biafrans.
There were.
Yeah. Uh, my own, I'm not going to waste time. I, I will support Akbari Boror with uh thirty A Jema.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, uh, I will send the receipt to Sunny during the week.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, bye. Yeah, we call on a Zoom user. Zoom user, over to you.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Darlo, no, thank you, our um Information Minister. My A P M. Thank you so much for your good work. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, mommy, Bishop.
Darlo.
God bless you, mom. Thank you, B D F. Thank you, our um leader and our Prime Minister, wherever they are. Though we keep them and they will come outside good time. Thank you so much, I really, really appreciate your work, my A P M. I'm so proud of you. Last time our uh general came out. He mentioned that whenever they cry. You hear them, you answer them. And I was asking myself and someone around me. Where are those ones that say that um you are not doing anything? That you are not even doing anything, that they are going to take care of the B D F and our B L A and others. Uh, is it that uh time is not um, is not yet uh uh time to start doing something? No problems. We are seeing everything, sir. May God keep you and preserve you more wisdom and strength upon you, sir. In Jesus' name. Amen. Supporting our today's town hall meeting. On behalf of Ohio. Ten thousand A J. And on behalf of Enugu State, ten thousand A J.
Darlo.
And on behalf of um, I'm, I'm giving ten thousand A J to A P M to tell him welcome to Akbari Boror. I don't know how to call the name, please. Not, yeah. No, sir. No, and I also take, uh, using another ten thousand A J to take uh, uh, O C. I was able more higher as an O G.
Uh huh, O C, yeah.
So, A J, ten thousand, we now, eh, at, eh, R O C. Uh, the my like, who see. Uh, no problem. Who one, you see, I K.
Darlo.
Darlo.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Uh, A P M is forty thousand A J.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Honorable love, give us some love.
Okay. Yes, so.
Allah, give us some love.
They want to move abroad. Uh, one year ago, I was Biafor. Mom, who will come on here, so. I got made you, I've been more afraid. Village brought up for that matter.
Oh.
Yes, so. Uh huh, I will respect my brothers, I will not interfere with custom. So, I'm. I'm going to do every in a generic way. I greet all my leaders. Past and present. And everything in between. And I greet. Those holding the line, both home and abroad. And I greet fellow citizens of Biafran land. Akbari Boror. I greet all of you. And I encourage you to continue. Others will follow. All the seeds planted doesn't germinate. The same day. And so, I hope other states will wake up. And know that what you are saying is real. So, A P M, they were. An easy lies ahead that wears a crown. But the God who brought you out. Will sustain you. He knows the amount of energy you need. And he has more than you need to supply. He will supply your need according to his riches. So. Nothing mega. Um, I'm gonna support Akbari Boror State. With fifty thousand A J. And I will send the receipt to Brava Sunny. They won.
Darlo. Amen.
There were, there were.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, honorable love. We come to our Wednesday admin, over to you.
Greetings to my fellow Biafrans. Hello.
Go ahead, go ahead, uh.
I thank everybody. I want to use this very opportunity to thank our acting Prime Minister. All the catalysts at the time of the face of the restoration of Biafran. All administrators present, I thank you all for your effort. It is not easy, but I believe God will lead us through. We are winners. I must not feel to express my regret for not participating in my own blog or having town hall fundraising. I tried my very best. But to now, I even relocated to two places. But still, I couldn't cook in. There was a heavy damp for that very day on my side. So I'm really sorry for not attending. I hope I am, I will be forgiven.
Amen.
For that. What I more, I am picking color on behalf of Ohio State. With ten thousand naira. On behalf of my army. I'm picking color. With five thousand naira. I can't actually remember the name of that state, Akbari Aura. Akbari Aura, I hope I'm right. So I'm total giving uh total of fifteen thousand. For the fundraising. Uh, from now on, what people will be doing. I don't think I will make that mistake again. God bless everyone.
Thank you. You are when you still have, thank you. I was going to arrive. Over to you, sir.
There were, there were, I hope I'm audible.
Yes, and they were good.
I greet everybody, greetings to the A P M, I think he is there, greetings to you, Minister of Information, all ministers here. Uh, greetings to my Kingsman from Akbari Boror State. Uh, with love from the state of Anyoma. I would like to support you guys today with a hundred A Jema. I will send the receipt to uh the Minister of Information. God bless everybody, have a blessed week.
Thank you. Thank you, honorable consul, thank you, thank you. Uh, Cheedo Z, unmute yourself.
Good evening. My honorable Minister of Information and Communication. Good evening, our acting Prime Minister. Azogu Kunkera, he's excellent. Fellow Biafrans, I greet you from here. And especially Akbari Boror. Uh, State, State of Akbari Boror, God bless you all for hosting our acting Prime Minister. Um, this always uh signify a unity of purpose. And then. I would say. Thank you very much for hosting our acting Prime Minister, thank you for hosting a fellow. thank you very much for hosting our acting prime minister, thank you for hosting, uh, fellow Biafrans to enjoy with you, because it is not easy. That after all the winds, after all the storm, you guys are still standing strong. And, um, you are not forgotten, no way. So, I thank you all for your cooperation. Thank you all for everything you have worked for, including the head of the eastern region of our defat government. Uh, eastern region is pulling a very heavy weight. And I want the north to emulate them, I want the central to emulate them, I want the east and west to emulate them. So they are doing a very nice job. On behalf of myself and the entire good people of our nation who love what we do. I will welcome our acting prime minister with the sum of twenty thousand A J. From me, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
There were, thank you. Thank you, thank you, our minister. Uh, we go to, uh, good number, over to you, hand is up again. Honorable, back to you.
Thank you so much. Once again, I'm of the opinion that every time in this fundraising should be converted to A J, A J, A J. And then, I buy, I'm not one minute to ten thousand A J. There's only observe here, honorable A P M, sir. Eh, suppose official, not just a, a Biafran citizen, but official. Come here, he said that he give us ten thousand A J, Naira, and keep quiet. Or a deputy says he give us ten thousand Naira, and keep quiet. That's what I want to point out to, whether we're using Naira here or we're using A J or A J more. We know what Naira stands for. That is my observation. Ten thousand A J to abide this, that's all be fifty thousand A J. Thank you.
Okay, uh, which, uh, which of the deputy?
I think deputy from, um, uh, either the, uh, Apakoro State. He says deputy officer, he give us ten thousand Naira, makes it, it's all, and not, and not the one.
Can we call the deputy back? To correct it with the fine. Uh, honorable love, yeah?
Yes, so.
Uh, you need, uh, you know, you're not doing.
Uh, uh, sorry, sir, I was just trying to respect the host. I was just trying to respect the host, sir. Now I'm on duty. Where is the culprit? Come. You are not.
Greetings, honorable, greetings, please, can I correct that impression?
Yeah, you correct it, it's fine, too.
Is that the person talking now?
Yes. No, no, I'm not the one, not the one, but it's my deputy. I want to say something.
You want to bail him out?
Yeah, of course, I want to pay him out.
Alright. Just, I just want to know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the Apakoro, that was my deputy earlier. And something we understand, whenever we gather like this, tensions or something might have happened, even I myself. When I was giving my speech earlier, those know me, know how good I am when it comes to oratory. Because of tension, I was rushing my speech. I'm sure because of tension, that's why he made that mistake. He is very committed, complete, and I'm truly sorry for that mistake that he made. On behalf of my deputy, I want to pay a fine of five thousand A J for that.
Okay. Thank you so much, because, uh, in our custom, if your child saw somebody else thing out there, you go and pay, and then when you go home, you deal with your child. So we appreciate him to his rescue. Thank you. We are Biafrans, we don't look face.
Exactly. Before I go on, I just, I hope my one minute is not finished, okay, please.
I want the timekeeper, ask the timekeeper.
Wait, so, the person that, uh, brought the case to court with, uh, how much? How did they bring the case to court?
Ten thousand, ten thousand.
Ten thousand, okay. And, um, the defendant has, uh, redeemed himself with, uh, how much?
Five thousand.
I, I want to redeem, hold on, please, I'm not the defendant, I'm speaking on behalf of my deputy, or because he brought.
Came on, you are standing in the court before, on his behalf, so. Pay the fine and go home and settle.
Okay, if you brought it to ten thousand A J, right, I want to redeem my A J, ten thousand A J. I want to redeem my with fifteen, I've had it ten thousand to five, making it fifteen thousand.
Now your papa burn you now. Ah, good, good job.
Okay. You see, my people, I am happy whenever I find, whenever I find airspace. They have, find me, I'm happy where, where, because I don't say the money they're going so well doing. You see, what is different between zoo state and Biafran state? Biafran state are created organically. Organically from the, by the people, not the one they post on you. Okay, that is different. I want to call this something, I hear somebody say outside. Biafran state are created by the people, organically created state, not the one they post to you. That's why I see our people as able to not. So, that if you're able to stand with this state, I'm proud. You created it by yourself. Not A P M posted to you, not their prime minister posted it. That is different between the zoo state. Please, not have to say whenever issue of this come, because this is organically created state by the people, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I will bet to your hand, it's up, over to you.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, thank you for calling my name. Thank you, let me bring my hand down now. I, I start by greeting every Biafran here.
Good thing.
Hmm.
I don't.
Good thing.
Voice, the voice mute yourself, oh. The voice. Mute yourself. Okay, I've muted them, continue, I'll wait.
I want to greet everyone, all the ministers, and in particular, our A P M. The indomitable A P M. I greet you.
And I will make, bet you, unmute yourself. You listen, okay, go ahead. Continue.
Yes, I'm greeting Biafrans once more, and particularly our A P M. Who has been very powerful, very, very strong, leading us.
Yes.
My people, my greetings goes to Mazinamdekanu, our leader. Goes to our P M. And our A P M, our B D F, and everybody here. I want to seize this opportunity to thank the pe- people of Apakiboro. You see, when we gather like this, we are all from Apaki today and always. Because the enemies, they never wanted us to be united. And for you people to be stand, standing so strong and invite our wonderful A P M, it gives me joy. I, I am very happy. People are standing on the path of truth. Because those who are fighting our A P M is not fighting him as Mr. Ogenkere. They are fighting Biafra. And we should all realize that Biafra is a heavy load. Right from the time of Odjuko was with K, Mazinamdekanu, A P M. And he is the only one now carrying all the burden. And people, to even thank him for standing strong for us, plus his personal affairs they took to abuses, but we no longer listen to them. So the only thing that gladdens my heart is to keep Oro is standing with us. And God will continue to bring us and unite us together. So my people, keep it up, and it is kudos to you all for doing what you are doing today. So for that reason, we are all Apaki today. And, uh, I will give my little donation of twenty thousand A J. Biafrans, please, even if it is one A J, bring it, we need it now, more than anything else. Looking after our men on ground, they are always saying it, that the only person who looks after them is our A P M, Mazie Ogenkere. They don't say it, uh, smiling or crying, they say it with their chest out. They say it boldly. So we all know that we need them. And we also need the American alliance. Our lobbyists, our lawyers, they have to be paid. So our freedom requires a lot of funding, a lot. It's not a child's play. So please, if you are sitting on the fence, calm down. The time for that has passed. Because last time when Mr. Success was telling us, eh, that the Indian do say we should guide our A P M with everything he knows. I knew that he must have heard something. And he didn't say it only one time. He said it twice, because only Indian knew exactly what the A P M is doing for us. I'm not praising him because he is here, but I'm praising him because he's a reality. Even a blind man can feel that we are moving forward. So, Apakiboro people, God will bless you and other states to the emulate them, copy, throw their line and invite A P M, who will always accompany him to every state that he goes to. All hail Biafra. Thank you so much.
There were, thank you. There were, I will bet you, there were, there were, there were. Uh. Bakoro State admin, your hand is up. And, um, at this point, we have to sing that, uh, Apakoro song of appreciation. To appreciate all our donors, and we'll sing it for like, uh, five times to appreciate our donors. Uh, the voice, are you there?
Yeah, um, yeah, yeah, um, Minister Tony, you have to unmute someone in the Apakoro. It is a bit easier, they can join in singing the main.
Yeah, who and who and who is that?
Eh, Akalala Zobo.
Hold on, hold on, the voice.
The voice is great, so, wait, I'm who and who and. The voice not to hear us.
The voice, hold on, Apakoro song.
Okay, Apakoro song, is he here?
Yeah, he's there, please unmute him.
Yes.
My goodness.
Where is, uh, women? The women, unmute yourself, where are you, this?
Alright, we can go now. Alright, let's go.
Hey, back.
Thank you, everyone, for that wonderful rendition. And for those who may not understand the meaning of this song. This song is giving praise to Chuku Kikabiama, the God almighty. And it's saying there is no one like him, he is the beginning and he is the hand. Avunutong, you are the beginning. Avunut, you're the hand, you're the one leading us to the, our final destination. So we are giving all praises to him, that's what this song mean. Meanwhile, I want to use this opportunity to appreciate everyone who turn up a mask today to support the town hall. Yes, Apakoro State, I am so happy, I don't know sure I've ever been this happy. For the first time in a meeting like this, I don't know why I was giving my speech at Washington. I don't know, for the first time, this from Twitter. Want to appreciate all, may God almighty and our ancestors continue to bless all of you. Meanwhile, one of my chairman, you know, some of them are in the relation, and they have issue with their phone. He called me earlier, just few minutes ago, to tell me that he want to support this, um, gathering some thousand A J, as he came in, came out of Iobasi. Please, whoever is taking records, you had that to hit ten thousand A J from Iobasi County chairman. And thank you so much, my A P M, continue to stand strong, do not listen. Distractors, so your wise man won't say. Please, your wise man won't say, your way. Distracting, please, somebody is.
Yeah, unmute yourself, uh, I'm fine, unmute yourself, I've muted everybody. Unmute yourself.
Alright, as I was saying, my able A P M, continue to stand strong. Your white man won't say it on your way to the top, you do not stop and trust on every dock, the back at you. Ignore all the noise, all the distraction, continue to stay focused. God almighty and our ancestors will continue to guide you. And thank you for the wonderful job you're doing. Thank you for always standing on the path of truths. Thank you for everything that you've done for Biafra so far. And I know that Elohim will continue to bless you. My honorable Minister of Information, we all know your use assets to this struggle. You've been doing wonderful work so far, and actually be supporting the people of Apakoro State. I want to equally thank you, please continue to stand on the path of truth. And ignore all the negative comments on your Twitter handle, I'm always advising on that, you go, I know sometime those comment may get to you, please ignore them, continue to stand on the path of truth. As for the people of Apakoro State, we are enjoying Biafra, that we were born for this, we were called for this. Only freedom of Biafra can save us right now. All these resources we have in our town, in our state, that is new governments have taken over. You can imagine, over three hundred and seventy-seven oil well, and there's no Oron son or daughter, or daughters that have been recorded to only a single one of them. All those oil wells are owned by these two zoo terrorists, or the Fulanis are the one in charge of most of this oil well. And these are the things that actually have been used to take care of our people. But the only way out is to make sure we get our freedom and to restore Biafra. My people in Apakoro State, what are you going to do? Are you continuing to wait until the zoo use their terrorist unit to destroy you? Come out a mask and support the struggle for the restoration of Biafra. Ela, 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 the time is now. We, we are born warriors right from the beginning, you know that, we were born warriors, we're never scared. At the point one of us say the hardest people to lead on earth is what? Biafra. But the most difficult people to lead at Apakoro, we are very stubborn and resilient. And an Oron man, if he sees any iota of mistake from you, he will call you out. He doesn't care who you are. That's what my people are. And I know that most of you are fearless, being that fearless into the struggle. Stand strong, more than support what we are doing. At the end of the day, trust me, you're going to be happy. Thank you so much, everyone. My humble servant, I am highly grateful to have this huge number in this time of meeting. May God almighty and my ancestors continue to bless all of you. Thank you once again.
Thank you, thank you, Martinique. We call on, uh, honorable, uh, U S North and South American rep. Over to you, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you, my Minister of Information, honorable Akbarawa. Thank you, sir. And I greet you, my, um, indomitable uh, acting prime minister. Uh, your excellency, honorable, Ogenkere, I, I greet you, sir. And, um, I also, uh, uh, salute our, our Biafa Defense Forces. I give them salute again, and, um, I bless our leader, Mazie Nandikano. And I also bless my prime minister. His excellency, honorable, uh, Mazie. His Excellency, Honourable, uh, Mazi Simonetma. At this point, I, I'd like also to remember our past leaders in a General Jukku and General Eifiong. I thank all that have graced this platform. That have come to support Akakiboro. Um, I, I praise Akakiboro and their people for having this, taking this bold step to come out and, and answer their name, because that's what it's all about. We all have to answer our name. And um and it's not an easy thing to organize. Uh, I doff my hat to the Akakiboro admin, the Akakiboro uh, uh leaders, you know. Now, I'm gonna need some help. Because last time I tried to uh pick up cola and make my contribution go into the western Biafra. I want to turn to North Biafra this time. And North Biafra, I've been able to identify um, Igala, or Igala State. Uh, I've been able to identify, I believe it's Alanso. Uh, but I will need help to identify, I, I think Ogogja is also in uh, North Biafra, North Biafra, right? Ogogja State, Igala State, uh, Alanso State and um uh, can anyone help me, Is, Is Ezani also in North Biafra? Hello, is, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Um.
Ezani State, is that in North Biafra?
Minister of Interior, are you here?
Yes, sir, please, yes.
It's not, Ezani, Ezani is not Biafra, thank you. Uh, it's um, uh, let me see. Is Enugu in North Biafra?
Yes.
Not, okay. Okay, let me read off what I have, I have Alanso. I have Ezani. I have Enugu. I have Igala. And I, I have Ogogja. Is there another?
And Amambala.
Say that again, please, oh. Oh, Habweni, okay. Am, Amambala, Amambala, okay. Got it. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven states. Okay, on the, I, I'm gonna pick up cola. Uh, and on behalf. I'm sorry?
It should be eight states, it should be eight states.
Okay, let, let me know what I missed, Alanso, Ezani, Enugu, Ezani. Igala, that's four. Uh. Or Habweni, right?
Yeah.
Uh. Right? Amambala, that's number seven, which, which one am I missing?
Have you got the Ezani? Let me count it for you.
Uh huh. Uh huh.
Ezani.
Okay.
Alanso.
Okay.
Um, um, Enugu.
Uh huh.
Ogogja.
Uh huh. Say again, Nusuka?
Idoka, Idoka, Idoka.
Idoka, okay, okay, that's the one I'm missing, okay. That's I, D. I D, okay, right?
E D, O K E, E D, O K E.
E D, O K E, okay, okay, I got you, I got you. Okay, that's it. Okay, got it. So there are eight of them. And um on, on behalf of um Akakiboro. I will be making donations uh to raise, to invoke the spirit of this, in these communities, in these states. That they will, if they have not, if they're not on board already, that they will come on board. And, and so, you know, join us to support what we are doing. And um I will support, pick up cola for each state. Let me start alphabetically, for Adoka. I will pick up cola with with twenty Ajema. Um, Alanso. Another twenty Ajema to pick up cola. Uh, Enugu's with twenty Ajema to pick up. Ezani. Twenty Ajema to pick up cola. Um. Or Habweni. Twenty Ajema to pick up cola. Ogogja. Twenty Ajema to pick up cola, Amambala. Twenty Ajema to pick up cola. And uh, let me see, Igala, or Igala, that's what I missed. To pick up, twenty Ajema to pick up cola, so altogether, uh 160 Ajema to pick up cola. And I will use 140 140 Ajema to welcome my indomitable APM, His Excellency. Honourable Mazi, Ogenkere, and there you are. And altogether, that would be 300 Ajema.
Wow, Onaku Kwa Keba. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Ogeni, rep. We rep with swag, U S rep with swag. All praises. All praises.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Thank you, our honourable rep, thank you so much.
All praises, all praises.
Thank you, honourable member.
Thank you. Alright, we come to admin, Edongebo.
There you are, sir. Ipakoboro, Isongo.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ivan, Ipakoboro, you know you. Hey, that's our traditional way of greeting. So I'm very happy for Ipakoboro to come today for their town hall meeting, to come up. Because it was like, it's the hardest thing to do. But they are bringing a change today, um, making for their mind to come up to me and do their town hall meeting. I say, may Akwaba Sibum, keep on blessing them. Energize them, make them be more vibrant. In the name of Akwaba Sibum, I pray. He say.
He say, Yandro.
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 Yes, so, I don't give them states, I have supported Ipakoboro for their town hall meeting. In the sum of five, eh, five thousand AJ. So I will send a receipt to Adam Na, Adanne. Thank you all, I say, may all Biafrans remain prosperous. APM, I salute you, sir. Minister of Information, Akbarawa Sony, I salute you, sir. And all Biafrans are participate on this study program. I thank you all, may Chukukikabiama keep on blessing you people, in the name of Akwaba Sibum, I pray. He say.
Thank you very much, there you are. Minister of Information, are you there?
Yes, 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 I'm here, thank you so much. Alright, everyone should try to familiarize themselves with um the map on the screen so that you can be able to understand your regions. You can screenshot this map on the screen. So that you can always recite your state based on regions and locations. It's good you know, so that you know the region you belong in your own nation or country of Biafra. And also familiarize yourselves with the names. Uh, Experience, please put it back again, share the screen again. Share the screen again once more. Experience, are you there? Alright, thank you so much. So everyone should make it a point of this, I just had a capture now to. Again, I've shared before, but I'll share it again now. Alright, Mary, over to you. Mary, unmute yourself.
Okay, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, our APM. Good evening, Akakiboro. Good evening, my brothers and sister, Ekondo, Ekondo, Akakiboro. Ekondo, our APM, our Information Minister, everyone in the space. So I'm so happy to meet you guys, that I did not miss it.
Mary, 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 you will pay, you will pay fine for not pronouncing Akakiboro very well, you will pay fine. Akakiboro, Akakiboro.
Akakiboro.
Akakiboro, Akakiboro.
Akakiboro.
Uh huh, Oro, Oro, Oro.
Yes, Oro. Akakiboro. Cheers, my people. So, hello, my people, my brothers, my family. Good evening, good evening, I'm happy that I meet you guys in time, oh, not in time, I'm late. Yes, good evening, I'm so, so happy that you people are inviting our Ekam meeting. Avonuete, APM, Nkenkele Basi, you are welcome, you are really, really welcome, very soon, oh, you will come to our own side too. Good evening, everyone. Yes, my brother, Akakiboro.
Oro is a British word, that they corrupted our name, we were not accepting Oro.
Akakiboro.
Oro.
Oro. Oro.
Okay.
Mary, go ahead.
Okay.
Devois, Devois, mute your mic, oh. Okay, good, Mary, continue, I've muted him.
Cheers, this is our unique. Oh, our APM eh, I welcome you to eh, Akakiboro, hmm, with eh, 10,000 AJ. And eh, I pick cola for behalf of eh, I don't give them, yes.
Thank you very much.
AJ, that is eh, 20,000 AJ, sir, you are welcome. Thank you very, very.
Thank you, Mary, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Honourable Minister Kiro, over to you, sir.
Okay, can you hear me, my honourable?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Yes, sir. Uh, if you want, I can enable my video, but that's okay.
Yeah, you can start. Yeah, start your video if you want.
Let's see. All praises. Can you see me?
Very well.
Okay, alright, sir, honourable minister, thank you, thank you for my honourable APM. We continue to pray for all of you, happiness, and of course, our angels. And of course, our PM and Oyendu, Mazen Nakano. Who in the world, world leader, put in dungeons and suspend them. But with trust in Mosai, that very soon, as he keeps to expose them, very soon, they are going to be out. And thank you, everybody, thank you for our angels, like I said, we continue to pray for everybody. We are so glad about the victories that our heavenly father is granting our angels. So we thank Mosai for all the victories and um, let me not take too much time. I, so as our able leader have spoken, when a leader speaks, you know that he's a leader. Our honourable rep just brought up something very, very important. Okay, we need to come together. So um, and he tried to call up the spirit of the states who have not participated. So my, um, may I give you the task of calling out all the remaining states that have not participated. And I'll be donating um, um, I'll be using a 10 Ajema for each of them that is, that is not been called up. That has not come, come to join and call on, call on our APM for a visit. So if you, if you can call up these states, if you know them, call them up for each of them, we give it, uh, I'll give a 10 Ajema to call up their spirit, to support Akakiboro people. And then um, if anybody else wants to add to the donations, to call up the spirit of the remaining. Because Mosai actually wants us to come together, we need to, this is the time for us to unite. This is the time for us to come together and then get these people out of our land so that all of us are happy and, and joy. Alright, so uh, my honourable minister, do you have any idea who, which, and which states have not participated yet? Like, sorry for me. Go ahead.
Okay, let me call uh, all these states uh, in their region. Uh, the Norwegian have um, taken, uh, we moved to certain. Uh, we move to certain region, we have eh, a pair states.
Okay.
Brandims. Avan states.
Two.
Ah, hold on.
Three.
Iwero has states.
Four. Five.
Uh, we have eh, we have eh, Ekanah, Ebanis states. Etan.
Six.
They have eh, a market. Uh, we have eh, Etana, Etana, it also make it eight. So we go to Eastern region.
Nine.
Uh, Eastern region.
Four, eight.
Uh, East states.
Okay.
East states, eh, so we move to Eastern region now. And Eastern region is the part of the region that Makiboro, who are in the attack on, am uh, among. It starts by Ehboi states, Ahukku states, Ekam states, Eda states, Kalabas states, eh, states. Dungivon states.
Five.
And eh, six states.
Seven.
Uh, it should be eight.
Eight.
Yes, we go to. Yes, go to Western region, Western region.
Is that it?
Yeah, go to Western region. Uh, we have eh, eh, Domingo, Migo State. Uh, we have eh, Sen State. We have eh.
Three.
We have eh, Iweres states. We have eh, Castig. We have eh, Anam, Anamas states.
Can.
We have eh, Irobo, Irobo, Isoco states. We have eh, something, Atlanta.
Seven.
And that makes who western, so we move eh, to Central region.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
We move to Se, we move to Central region. Uh, Central region comprise eh, Icambas states. Onem.
Two.
Allus states.
Three.
Uh, states. Iweres states.
Five.
Those states.
Six.
And eh.
Seven.
And eh, capital, uh, city, eh, eh, state, everywhere city.
Okay.
That is what makes the region. Total of the, the one that I called now.
Okay.
Eh, twenty, two states.
Twenty-two, for this Central?
Thirty-two, thirty-two states.
For that, thirty-two, okay. For total, alright. Okay, so uh, we use eh, eh, ten ajema to call up the spirit of each of these eh, thirty-two states and anybody who wants to join can, is free to join. So uh, then uh, so this thirty-two then comes three twenty ajema. And then uh, to welcome our APM to Akbaki Oro, uh, we add another hundred there, hundred and, no, not hundred, hundred and eighty to it. So total will be five hundred ajema. Okay, alright, so.
Wow.
Thank you very much, my brethren, uh, thank you for doing. Okay, thank you, my APM, Most High and Christ, we continue to bless you and strengthen and all cabinet members for the mighty work you are doing and uh, of course our angels. And our Onyendu and the Pion will be coming at preach soon, I'm sure of it.
Yes.
MoSida and Christ bless us all.
Konaka, 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 again.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
They were and uh.
Your honorable fellow.
Would you also recommend those in USA uh, to see, you know, uh, please kindly use the Stripe, PayPal and uh, and Zelle? Thank you. You, Stripe link, PayPal and Zelle, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, honorable Kelo, God bless you.
Kelo, please get in touch with me. Or my I will.
Also on Telegram, when you are typing on Telegram, when you press on the give button, you type Biafra, you can see Biafra flag now on Telegram. When you are trying to type a message. So we are trying to make sure anywhere you enter, you will see the Biafra flag so that people will be asking how come about, what is it about this new flag that is coming out on eh, many platforms? Very soon you may see it in eh, WhatsApp eh, chat button. Thank you so, so much. And um, we want to appreciate everyone that have been here. Um, Akbako Oro have done the netful and um, we look forward to seeing many other states.
Yes.
Um, at this point, I'll call on um, the APM to take the stage. I'll call on the APM to take the stage and um, he will not eh, take much time as usual today because he said he has a lot of on his table. So for those of you that may expect his speech to be very long today, eh, don't be angry because he doesn't have much time to give you a long speech today. So take it the way you will make it short and be happy with his speech because of his busy schedule. Okay, please, everyone should remain muted while the APM takes the stage. And we are trying to hasten up on the program so that we relieve everybody in time. Thank you so much as we welcome the honorable APM, His Excellency, Honorable Okajukon Kera, the APM of the Biafran people to the stage. Thank you, our APM, you're welcome.
Thank you, honorable Minister of Information, just give me one second, please.
Okay, uh, Akbarawa ME said eh, he can't speak where he is, that he will be supporting Akbako Oro with eh, twenty thousand AJ. Thank you so much, Akbarawa ME, thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I saw your hand up before, are you still there? Before the APM comes back to stage, IG, go ahead, make this happy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My come out, yeah. I'm going to eh, parade my states, I'm going to parade the boy to welcome eh, eh, our agent to eh, to this time of five, eh, five thousand AJ. I'll send it to Lagos and I'll send the message to him.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, APM, over to you.
Thank you, thank you very much, uh, I know it's kind of late, so I'm just gonna make it briefly. Because uh, we have some technical issue earlier before we started. And we also uh, battle with some of these uh, subverses. All these people that the Nigerian government used to send to disrupt our program. So sorry that I can only, and for those that are still awake, we appreciate you, uh, thank you very much. It's all about the freedom of Biafra, that is the reason why we're here. And uh, a lot of us, we are ready to be awake twenty-four seven. Fighting for our freedom. We can go to any length, any extent. And for our fellow citizens that are back home, we are aware of the challenges of uh, steady electricity, which is difficult. That's one of the reasons why we, we, we are fighting to make sure we restore uh, Biafra. Because uh, the basic amenities, every human being that God create deserve to live like a human being, not like animal. Because a lot of our brothers and sisters from whom, some of them uh, where we are, we have steady light here, they don't. Some are using uh, their generator uh, to power their gadget to make sure they have light to be able to see, you know, spend these two, three, four hours. Some are using torchlight, some are using light, lighter or whatever, lantern. Please uh, let me just make it brief. My fellow citizens of uh, Akbaki Oro, I know last time uh, there's one of our uh, uh, citizen uh, that reside in uh, one of the Middle East country. He asked a time trying to find out where I'm from. And I remember when I visited Al-Ansa and I led them now from Al-Ansa. And they are from Al-Udah, last time I'm from Itayana. Today I'm from Akwaki Oro, whether you like it or not. So for him that asked me last time, from Australia, where I'm from. Tell him I'm from Akwaki Oro. If you don't like it, that's your business. Maziyo Getukun Kera is from Akwaki Oro. So whether you like it or you don't like it, uh, please, that's where I'm from. Okay, and uh, thank you all, all the administrator, the admin, uh, you guys have done very great. And I can see our honorable Bishop here, I know it's late, over where she is, but even if we go into stay more hours, she already dedicate herself to serve the people of Biafra to restore. And when I keep calling Biafra, eh, eh, it's from her. Eh, eh, so we like, I'm calling Biafra, that's eh, eh, our honorable Bishop here. So and that's how she used to pronounce Biafra, by Biafra. So yes, so it's all the same, so we know what we're talking about. Well, a special greeting to those before us that have worked hard to make sure that we know the truth, to make sure that we see the light. It's all about seeing the light. Uh, when uh, God sent Jesus Christ, our Lord, uh, Christ to come to die, to redeem us. He said eh, you know, he made it clear that Christ is light to the world. And what that, that, what does that mean? Does that mean a steady electricity? No. It's a light in a sense to give us our freedom, to let us know what we need to be able to uh, you know, get to the Creator and to get favor from Chukukikabiya. So that is uh, what our past leaders have done. Our leader, Ujuku accompanied with uh, Philip Effion, they open our eyes, the reason why we should fight for our freedom. And uh, our leader, Mazin Ndekan, start from where they stop. Also our Prime Minister Mazie Simon Ewa. They are both where they are today, fighting for Biafra. Our leader Mazin Ndekan, we're proud of him, before the program started, that start today. We listen to his thunderous voice and, and a powerful prayer, you know, so it's uh, you know, he are with the spirit. Now Prime Minister Mazie Simon Ewa, I spoke with him two days ago. So he's healthy and uh, you know, eh, he kind of uh, uh, you know, he kind of more, you feel more kind of relief knowing that uh, whatever happened is uh, you know, is a lesson and he learned a lot from it and he opened his eyes. To know things that he haven't before as well. And also make uh, make uh, made it clear. You know, our recognition, we also come from Washington that we are fighting hard for them to recognize us. You know, making know this world leader for us to be recognized. And uh, he propaganda on social media, all those that are trying to destroy what we are doing. You know, that will not help. So only what we have, just like what is happening in Twitter space, in S, uh, we shall, we have uh, the hosts. Are always uh, uh, tutors and uh, Mkiro, David Inuna, on good number, Nonsu, One Million and others. We shall, we know Minister of Information, Mazie Soni Akbarawa, is in charge of the media team, they are doing a great job. They are doing it perfectly well, uh, uh, honorable minister as well, Yunis, Chinirapu, a lot of them, so I can, if I keep mentioning their name, that means I will take more time. So what they are doing, engaging the international community, especially like eh, lately, lately. Creating awareness to let them know that there's ongoing war in Biafra land, war that uh, the Nigerian terrorist state have waged upon us. So and it's, you know, they are really educating the world to know what is going on. So it's better we channel our energy towards creating awareness to the international community. And if we can as well shift our focus from all the destructors. The cool plotters from boot camp that are just there misguiding people, misguiding themselves. Just as I said uh, two days ago in space. I will find it difficult to forgive them, even if I do. What about the Biafran people that they have offended? What about the land of Biafra that all these subverses, their action, their outrances have killed too many uh, Biafrans? So please, all the evil people, disease from your evil will. It will help. It will help at all, APM also is emphasizing that. Please, I want to encourage each and every one of us. While the program was going on today, I have a lot in my mind. Just thinking when all Biafrans would just come together and put an end to this nonsense that the Nigerian terrorists have brought upon us. And we have to be, do that quick, very fast. Because these people, they don't mean well for us. Nigeria have never offered us anything good for over hundred years. So do you think that will happen now? That will not happen. Since yesterday, I'm just be thinking about everything that have been happening. At the end of the day, the victims are always uh, are always the innocent Biafrans. The victims are always the Biafrans that are struggling to feed twice a day. It always happen that the poor Biafrans that are this people have actually put them in perpetual bondage of poverty for now until we re, fully regain our territory and govern ourselves in a way that every Biafra will be able to, you know, uh, have access to all basic amenities to help their family. They always the victims. When Hope Ozodimwa, the former illegitimate governor, governor of Imo State bombed a lot of community villages in Imo. He did not burn the wealthy people home. It's always the poor, the poor people. When they destroying the marketplaces, it's always the poor Biafrans. I start asking, all these rich politicians, rich Biafrans that have colluded with this terrorist Nigerian state. I, I, I ask myself question, I say, how I wish, they are the one these terrorists are actually coming after. How I wish, they are. How I wish, their houses are the ones that have been bombed or destroyed or their businesses. We just want to assure them that from Hope Ozo Dema to Saludo to OT, they have killed thousands of Biafrans. I'm not using the word, what, by here, no. They have killed Biafrans, they have colluded with the Nigerian terrorist state to kill Biafrans. And if we lay our hand on them, we'll kill them. You, him that come to kill us, if we have the opportunity, in return, we'll kill that person. It don't matter who it is, no one have monopoly of violence. If I, Mazi Yokejukunkeri, if I have opportunity, none of them, we not spare any of them. They have killed thousands of Biafrans, thousands. They have displaced thousands. They have destroyed our land. They colluded with Nigerian terrorists and the Fulani headsmen, the jihadis to come and kill Biafrans. Are you telling me if I have the opportunity? I will not, before they get to us, I will not get to them. I will do it in a blink of eye, in a blink, I will do it. That's why I encourage every Biafran to wake up before it's too late. To wake up before they kill you. Before they get to you, you get to them. For those that don't want to support what we are doing, shame unto them. We have a lot of millonias and bilonias. I came across a video today, Obi Kubana wife in Miami, showing where she went for shopping or whatever, how beautiful and just demonstrating. I'm ask myself question, but in Biafran, we don't have such places. And this, the husband is one of those that have, there's a time when Tunubu, when Tunubu resume office, she, I mean, the chief, the one they call chief priest. He actually went to see the co-founder of Boko Haram terrorists, I mean, she, him. These people are so evil that they don't care what happened in Biafran land. So it's better they leave our land alone, leave, they should leave, they can relocate, they can go to Abuja. Obi Kubana, chief priest, Saludo, OT, all these idiots, let them leave. Let them leave Biafran land alone. I don't want to blame Biafran people for not coming in mass to do the right footing. But I encourage everyone to support and fund our freedom. Freedom is not given, freedom is taken. If we are waiting for United States of America to hand over our freedom to us in a plethora of gold or in a way that Biafrans, don't worry. From today, we recognize you, you are free. We never have, we have to show them the readiness and they are following what we are doing. Follow us on Twitter space, they follow everything we do. We'll be having meeting with them, negotiating with them. But we have to let them know that we cannot wait until twenty thirty, but they predicted the breakup or collapse of Nigeria, that that will happen in the year twenty thirty. We can't wait till then, let it be now, now, tomorrow. Twenty thirty might be too late. There is a time, the president, J W Trump, President of United States of America, he told the Prime Minister of Israel, Benjamin Netanyahu, to wrap it up, hurry up. Because the more they prolong the war in Gaza, the more people would die. So it's to just wrap it up, so that there will be. The more we prolong the freedom of Biafran, the more we prolong, the more Biafrans will be killed. So it's better we hurry up to save life. If we can end the killing today, if we can stop the Nigerian state today, no Biafran will die tomorrow. If we all can come in mass and support this freedom, we will have less casualty, we have less Biafrans being killed. The more we prolong it, the more Biafrans are dying. Because these Nigerian terrorists, they did not come to give us better life. Their aim is to make sure that the Fulani headsmen overrun our land and they are colluded with Nigerian state. Their aim is to disown from our God-given land. Their aim is to Islamize us. So we have to do everything we can to be free from this bondage. Everything we can. Please, every Biafran, whether you are home or abroad, or abroad, support your freedom. Fund your freedom. We need this fund more than before. All over Biafran land, the Nigerian terrorists, they are everywhere, doing everything they can to bring down our defense forces. Why doing that, they are invading a lot of community, chasing them out. But I just find it heartbreaking that so many Biafrans don't want to wake up and join what we are doing. Just the, they just concluded Afcon, the African National Cup. There's this young lady from Benwistit, Oteng. She visited IDP camp, to do what? But you know that this young lady actually believe in Nigeria. The same Nigeria that she played football, or you call it soccer for. And for them to, you know, they even won a trophy for Nigeria. This same Nigeria have put her own people in IDP camp. And some of these fools happily promoting the name Nigeria. And the same Nigeria have destroyed life in Benwistit, in all over Biafran land. Why some still call it Nigeria, the same Nigeria that is killing, they are killing Biafran and their own. Please, people of Abaki Ora, remain resilient, remain strong, focus. Biafran is here. Biafran is here. And all those distracting us, please stop the destruction. If you one of those distracting us, just be rest assured, you will not go free. If you want to be forgiven, you have to start making a U-turn. You have to start doing what is right. You have to embrace truth and justice and equity. But if you decide to keep sabotaging what we are doing, we not forgive you. The end part will not be good. And whatever, all this sabotaging our movement today, whatever they are doing, might as well impart their family or their generation. They don't want to bring cost to their generation. Please, I will encourage every saboteur to disease from sabotaging this great movement. What is our weapon for them, they will not be able to handle it, will not forgive. Too many Biafrans have died. The Jordan side of war took over five million Biafrans. Until date, Biafrans have been killed every day. They have been chased out of their home every day. And some of my fellow Biafrans, all they do is to complain, to whine about how the Nigerian terrorists have come to kill them. If they come to kill you, prepare and kill them back. Fight, fight, fight back. It's only coward that will be quiet unless somebody come and overrun or kill them. My fellow Biafrans, I encourage everyone to support our freedom. Fund your freedom, fight the fighter of good fight. Fight to free your people. Nothing wrong if you fight for your freedom. And we need to look at the greater and the bigger picture. The benefit we all enjoy after we have totally liberated Biafran land and restore our sovereignty and govern ourselves how we want. The benefit Biafran will offer, good governance, good education, good healthcare system, good infrastructure, all basic amenities. I don't see any reason why you don't set your eyes on the ball. Nigeria is a failed state, Nigeria have failed and still continue to fail. If you are a Biafran to me, if you know those that have come to kill, you kill them back. If it is Hope Ozo Dema, you identify him, if you can get to him, do it. If you can't, support those that can. Because him that have come to kill you, never love you. Him that have come to kill you have no mercy. Him that have come to take your life, don't have the right, don't have the violence or to take your life. Him that have come to kill you is not your creator. Every time we go on social media or what we see, we are whining, crying, how the Nigerian terrorists, how they have come to kill us, how they have deployed this. That is why every Biafran need to support this freedom. Every Biafran need to support. And if you're a Biafran, if you have the capacity, the ability to support this freedom, you are not doing it. Shame unto you. Because of time, I think I don't really have much time left. I just want to appreciate everyone that is doing what is right, keep doing what you are doing, Biafran is here. Biafran is here. But I'm just heartbroken why some Biafrans have not realized this, that Biafran is here. And do what is right by supporting their freedom. Anybody that is found that stand our way of freedom, crush that person down. If it is any of these so-called chiefs, evil chief, chiefs that come to destroy you, chiefs that come to sell your land to the foreigners, crush this chief down. If it is the illegitimate governors that will not validate anymore, crush that government. If it is one of these fair illegitimate politicians that have sold us out, crush that person. They have killed us enough. So we can't come, come every day, be complaining how the Nigerian terrorist is killing us. The whole world know Nigeria is a terrorist country, terrorist state. The whole world know Nigeria is a failed state. What, who, do you need any prophets to tell you about Nigeria? For over hundred years, we benefit nothing from that useless shitwore country. All what the country called Nigeria offer us is pain and sorrow. And for the independent medias, all these people that, I don't think the land of Biafran will even forgive them. Both the independent medias, both the content creators, both the fearless ones, evil medias, that all they do is hard to bring what we are doing down. They will be the one to cry to you and their, with their platform, to lie, to deceive Biafrans, to even discourage Biafrans from funding their freedom. The same ones will come and tell you how much, how money is coming in, what they using it for. What they don't know, they don't have to forget about it, they need to see what they know. All these people that have come or colluded during the bidding of the Nigerian terrorist state, it will never end well. It will never be well with them. Everything they laid their hand on will be evil before their eyes. The air they breathe, the food they eat, will turn to poison, will turn to evil. It breaks my heart to see Biafrans dying every day. And Biafrans that supposed to come to rescue, to support us from this mayhem or from this killing, they refuse to do that rather, they try and do everything they can to bring us down. Thank you, the executive, the admin of Abaki Ora. Thank you all and we appreciate everyone, just keep doing what you're doing, keep funding your freedom. If you haven't registered your name in the Book of Light, those that are Biafran will remember. If you haven't registered for the land of Biafran to remember you and bless you, kindly do that. Very soon, we will not be asking Biafrans to contribute or to donate. Very soon that will stop and that will end. But for those that think they will just come destroy what we are doing, thinking that, oh, when our Prime Minister Mazzy Simon-Ehwa come out, he will call everybody back, forgive everybody, that will never happen. Not this time. For those that think when our leader Mazinandikan comes out, everyone will just come back and they will start from where they stop to destroy, that will never happen. That time have gone. Will never happen again, over twenty years. They took us for right, who hold everybody accountable. Thank you all from here.
Thank you, my Pm, thank you so much for that encouraging speech. We appreciate your time for making it to Abaki Ora State Town Hall meeting. Let's take some hands before we wrap it up. Ella, your hand is up, over to you.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, I've donated ten jema for Ora state. I've sent the receipts to the UK platform.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, we appreciate.
Thank you.
Please, from the website, we just encourage, let's just be using the link, this Stripe link for now. Because the website is still under maintenance. Please, I strongly encourage everyone to use the Please, uh, I strongly encourage everyone to use the Stripe. And for, uh, those that have monthly subscription. Please just check your, your email. You'll be receiving some notification there. Uh, just try, uh, manage to strip or kindly. Visit the Stripe, uh, and then make your donation from Stripe, Stripe paper and zip. Thank you.
Thank you, APM. Edidem Owana, over to you. Your hand is up.
Alright, uh, Honorable APM. And all the cabinet members here present. OJ, 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 very Apakoro.
Away.
Noibum, Isan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ibo Queno.
Yeah. Bueno.
Okay, so I'm glad for this, uh. Town Hall Meeting today. And, uh. Yeah, I'm saying because it's red name to do. Because. Many necessary one I use also. Tell me again, I'm not the only one. One thing I want to say is that. Yeah, I can remember few minutes. What is going on in that zoo country. That, uh, most of the states. Being governed by APC. Is prone. To terrorism attacks. And recently. Uh, Governor Mufu. Has surrendered state. And our APC. Meaning that. The news, I guess, it could took a headline, not to pay in other places. It's also getting used also. And I want to use this opportunity to encourage every one of us, both Noibum of Akoro. All the states that emerging from the old Akwabom state. That this is the time. For every one of us. To arise. And come together. And pool our resources to support Brigi. And support. The APN. Because he's leading us. In the right direction. So in order not to take so much time, I want to support today. With, uh, twenty thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Edidem.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. We call another, uh, Anurika. Anurika, over to you.
Yeah, Honorable Sonny, please hold on. Edidem, which state are you from? Are you from Kalabas state or?
Edidem should be from Irohibum.
As I was speaking. As I'm asking, we need someone from Kalabas very again in the eastern region. As I was asking.
Okay, thank you. No, Edidem is, is within the all, uh. Akwabom. Alright, we continue. Anurika, over to you.
Yeah. I want to welcome our honorable acting prime minister. Mazzi Rogan Kere. With, uh, a very beautiful song. To Biafrans. Biafrans we need, so in the zoo, ah. Ah, ah, ah. Biafrans we need, so in the zoo, ah. Nina haba, na ma ichineke, na ma ichineke. Ka habo, niina habo, na ma ichineke, na ma ichineke. Ka habo. Biafrans we need, we put a nego, no. Ego, no. Biafrans we need, we put a no ego, ego. Ego gemma, niina habo, na ma ichineke, na ma ichineke. Ka zubu, niina habo, na ma ichineke, na ma ichineke. Ka habo. Ego na, ni para namwembu, obego kere kere. Ego na, ni para namwembu, obego kere kere. Ego kere kere, ego mara manai para ya o. Ego kere kere, ego mara manai para ya o. Biafrana, boye gemma, biafrana, boye gemma. Biafrana hugo, hugo, no bego mara manai. Eh, wezuka nandikano, ayagayama, we goe gemma, ayinda gayama, we goe gemma. Yeah, Biafrans. We have to rise up this time around. We are in a critical situation. Without a gemma, a J, we are going nowhere. So please. Whatever you are doing, make sure that you save money for every Saturday and Sunday. Because we are in a war. Without a J, a gemma, we are going nowhere. So I ask God to replace this all our bosses. And to make sure that all our businesses will increase so that we will support our freedom. So I am supporting our acting prime minister with this special speech. Adorable speech that he made today. I'm supporting it with three thousand AJ. So total of all my donation today is ten thousand AJ. Day one.
Day one, thank you very much. Thank you.
Day one, day one, Anurika, day one. Uh, Metu Maribe, over to you.
Hold on, hold on. Hello.
Day one.
Oh goodness me. Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Since morning. The last, the first time I came here, I just joined out because of, um, uh, what I have doing. So I had to rush. And went, I thought by now you people must have gone. Unbelievable. May God bless you all. May Chukwokabiamma continue to sustain you. Hey, I don't know. I don't know how to do this thing. I don't even know how to thank you, you guys for this steadfastness. Thank you very much. Live long. We must restore, we must, it must be actualized. I thank you from Canada here. I just want to give out my little twenty gemma to you guys for staying till now. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for supporting Apakoro State. Thank you. Thank you. Minister Komford, over to you. Your hand is up.
For, for the emotional statements that have been said today. Special from here. Our acting prime minister, I will increase, uh, my. I owe you. I sent, um, I promised yesterday I increased it by a hundred, hundred euros. That would be six hundred, I pay him.
Thank you, thank you, Minister Komford. Thank you.
Please, uh, Honorable Bishop. Uh, if you have any problem with that one, at least always you can contact, contact Honorable Kelo or contact me. But on the payment, I don't do it through the website. You can do the same, we'll be doing it through the paper.
I just want to say what to, uh, Biafrans, please.
Uh.
I want to say what to the Biafran. This group that have done this, um, um, uh, our acting prime minister's visit. See, they didn't, um, know that this will be very successful. So all the, um, all the, other people that are a bit timid to do this, um, visit, let them do it because people will cooperate with them. And people will do something for them as well. And I'm encouraging those who are giving, please. I know when it's getting to the end, it's the scorpion point. When it's getting to the end, and it's always difficult, but let no one give up, please. Let no one give up. God will bless every one of us that are helping, especially with the space, you know, um, I always join them to listen. They're doing very, very well and may God bless them, even those who are contributing. May God bless every one of us. And our contribution is not something you have to say is giving it to individual. No, it's not something to do with individual, it's to do with your own independence, to do with your freedom for your children, grandchildren. That is all you have, have to look into. This is what we're doing. It's not for anybody's sake, it's for our own sake, our children's sake. God bless those who are contributing and those who are coming to contribute as well. May God bless us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister Komford. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Our, um, Honorable Seorad, over to you.
Yes, sir. Um, greetings, everyone. Greetings, APM. My bishop greetings from here.
Hello.
And greetings, my rep, Mazzi Sonny. I'm Minister of Information. I greet you. All Biafrans and all the wonderful citizens of Apakiporo. Uh, we are all, we are all from your state today. And none of you is more Apakiporo than me. And you should know that the way we have all gathered here. Is a clear indication that Biafran people are one.
Yes.
Just like, uh, just like our bishop has just said, it's like she took what I was going to, actually, one of my major reasons for taking the mic. Those people, those states that have not, uh, had their fundraising, always remember that you're not alone.
Yes.
If you call for your fundraising, we are all going to be there. It doesn't matter how many people who are in your state, but the more you do it, the more other people will be encouraged to do the same thing that they're supposed to do.
Yeah.
We can't wait for Biafrans to realize and do what they are supposed to do.
Yes.
I know they are listening to us. Some of them are listening to us. If you're listening to us and you're still sitting on the fence, remember. Um, device in MN Guangwayme hello that. A lot of oddities. Is about to befall our land. You know, there has been so much, uh, going on lately. You've heard our defense forces on several occasions. Talk to Biafrans about what is going on back home. If we do not all rise up together and do what we are supposed to do, our enemies will overrun our territory. Uh, please, I want to, uh. Represent my own state of Alansa today with fifty thousand AJ. Thank you very much, everyone. And don't forget, whenever you call. Whenever you call us on your own country, uh, state town hall meeting, we're all going to be there. Done everyone. Thank you so much, APM.
Thank you, thank you, I serious. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, Apakoro State Admin. Um, has all your. Uh, counties, have they submitted their. Uh, quota for the day, have they said something? Those that are available. Because, uh. We are on the wrap up section now. We want to wrap you up.
Yeah. Go ahead. Okay, thank you, uh, Minister Sonny. And those that couldn't make it, actually send their contribution. The other way, and a few other ones who do not have phones, if you don't have Android phone, online. Now, dedicated to me. They do something, but you know, it's about, three of them have sent their own contribution so far. That then, we are county and Iobasi county and Uwank County say something. I think for now, and the woman leader was complaining that she was locked out and she's trying to come, she couldn't. I seen then, uh, her phone has been turned off. That's the only person that was meant to speak. Since so far, we are done with all the executive of Apakoro State. Most of them are booking. And it's left for Mr. Sonny, the people of Apakoro State have been waiting to hear from you. So your speech now to encourage us. So over to you, sir.
Yeah, I, I will do that as a, a closing remark because of time. Because the APM has spoken, so wants us to end this as fast as possible. Everyone can go and read. It's been a, a tedious week. Um, Mary, your hand is up.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, Apakuro. Yes. Now, my APN, you can care about it. I was saying, I call you, I may try it, I was saying, I can't play for you. For our APN speed, for the encouragement and everything because. If Nigeria come, this who come men come to kill us, we kill them back, believe me. Because this time around is not jokes. Sir, may God bless you. For your good work and your safe to, to your work to save Biafra. May God almighty continue to give you this strength. I was saying, I can't go young. So give me this support. This, uh, my can care about his speed, our APN with, uh. Five thousand AJ, that is, uh, twenty-five thousand AJ. Thank you, sir. May God bless you. Thank you. We love you. God love you more.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Alright. Uh, we have to wrap it up now. And in the spirit of wrapping it up. I want to say. A very big thank you to everyone that made it to Apakiporo. Apakiporo. And, um. I want to say, Apakoro, Ilarelao. Apakoro, Ilarelao. Apakoro, Ilarelao. Yes, they understand the phrase. They understand better. It's time, it's time, and it's time. When we listen to the state administrator of Apakoro. He. Uh, referenced. The influx of, um. Or the emergence of, um. Fulani terrorists. In, uh, Ora. And then, when Edidem Owana spoke. He elaborated on something that every state where APC. Appoints to be in charge, it has become a den of, um. Fulani. Control.
Wow.
And it called on everyone to wake up. In old Akwabom and old Kalab, uh, Cross River. That the terrorists are everywhere. So that's why I said. Apakoro, Ilarelao. Yes. So I'm happy that, um, miracle happened today. You all. Have witnessed the joy, the togetherness. The consistency in all Biafrans standing side by side with each other. Today, we are in Apakiporo, tomorrow, we are in Irohibum, next tomorrow, we are in Ithianan, another day, we are in Alou, another day, we are in Aludoo. Another day, we are in Awku, another day, we are in Eziani, another day. We are in Nkamba, we are in different, different states like that. So we are all in this together. And each state that we go, we become bona fide citizens of those states. And that is what has kept us going. Please. I am that, um, Sonny that will. Be waking you up from time to time and ask you. Your country, your state must have a town hall meeting. It's not all about the money. That is what some people misunderstand. It's about showing the presence of the government in your state and your country. Making the people to know that you are inclusive in this government. That the government has a seat. Has their presence and is very visible in your state and in your country. When you host a town hall meeting or a talk. With the prime minister or the acting prime minister or with the BRJ. It is opportunity to showcase. That this very government, now with the you, we did inside. And we did campaign and we did. And you will now convince the people of your country or your state. That they have been standing on the fence. And that they have done wrong. So it's time they all come together. And come inside. Because if you don't see that flag flying. Before your doorstep, they will not take it seriously. But now, when they see it, they now know, oh. It's also happening here. That Biafra we here in Alou State, Aludoo. Oh, we are here in Apakiporo today. So it's opportunity for us all to know. So, it's opportunity for us all to know what we are doing in the. Government of Biafra, the progress we make, the achievement on the table, and the way forward. And even at this time, anyone that has seen A P M as his enemy. That has seen Sonny Akbarawa as his enemy. Has not come to understand that he or she was blindfolded, that means you were not meant for Biafra. The spirit of Chukukke does not speak to you. Yes, because you will go and dance naked and come back. Sonny Akbarawa will still be here looking at you. I'll give you time. I will behave like Mumu. You will show yourself like Nkosi did. And then, later you come back shouting, this sunny is a very trickish and very dubious and very evil. Oh, because I did not allow you to destroy. And another one came again. What was the name? Is this sunny evil? He's the most wicked. Yes, I am wicked because I don't allow you to go and destroy. So, if you like, try from now to tomorrow, you can destroy B R J I because I will be there. Appreciate everyone, starting from the uh. The sole admin of Akakwara to the entire team of Akakwara. That have made it happen today. And to all of you that have visited us in Akakwara. Thank you so much for making us to laugh and smile today. Yes, we are overjoyed. We are smiling and we are very, very happy. Because if you did not all visit us in Akakwara today, we wouldn't have known our worth. Yes. Today, we are worth in Akakwara. Today, we will put that we are super inclusive. Today we know that the A P M carries Akakwara in his heart. Today we know that the entire B R J I carries Akakwara.
What is an Akakwara or so?
Okay, you see I'm, you see I'm, okay, you see I'm, see I'm. Okay, so this is a bona fide citizen of Akakwara. If the A P M is a bona fide citizen of Akakwara, that means there is no petition that will come on this table that will be flipped off.
I get along with Timo.
Okay, so.
We have a tattoo for A P M from Akakwara.
Okay. So, we are very happy. We are very happy, honestly. And we appreciate every donation that has come. From left, right, and especially from those of you in Daspora. You have made us very proud. We are really, really overwhelmed. And let me use this opportunity to say something to all the state admins. The reps and um. Everyone that is in charge of their country. Um, please, in a month, we have only four Sundays. And in a month, we have just for, sorry for saying only, we have just four Sundays. And then in a month, we have just four Saturdays. And in a month, we have just four Fridays. Aha. Now, if every state or country or reps and admins wants their town hall meeting. To be on a Sunday. Or on a Friday, or on a Saturday. Now let us do this statistics here. Or let's do the arithmetic. If U S, not in South America, say they want a town hall meeting, it must be on a Sunday. Then UK, they want a town hall meeting, it must be on a Sunday. That means two Sundays are gone in one month. Then, um Germany said they need town hall meeting, it must be on a Sunday. Three Sundays are gone in one month. Then Italia, they want a town hall meeting, it must be on a Sunday. The four Sundays are gone in one month. And then, these same four countries or continent or states that have called names. The next month, they want to repeat another town hall meeting, and they want just those Sundays. Now, what will happen to every other countries and states that also want the town hall meeting? And they say it's only Sunday, Sunday that they want it to be. So you will see that we will only be having just four countries or continents doing town hall meeting, or four states. The rest wouldn't be able to do because they are all waiting for Sunday, and the Sunday schedule is already filled up. Because you have just four days that answers Sunday in a month. So what is my point here? My point here is that every country, every state. Can pick any day for your town hall meeting and your fundraising. Because just the four Sundays in a month will not be enough for everybody. We have forty states of Biafra. Aha. Then we have many countries that are meeting to come out from them and fundraising. So, we should not all wait for just Sundays. No, let us not just wait for Sundays. To be the only convenient time. If not so, we wouldn't achieve what we need. We are at war. And the war time zone does not wait for us to have a convenient time for the town hall meeting to raise the money. So that's one thing we consider. We have the money, we want to come together so that we can raise funds. Pick any day in the week when you are filling the form. Monday is the, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. But don't go to Saturday. Saturday is our general raising. Sunday, some people will pick it, but those other days in the week, please try. I want everyone to understand my point here now. You people should try in your state or country to understand that we are at war. And the time of the war does not wait for anybody, for you to have a convenient day to come and do your fundraising. Come and do your town hall meeting. Because everything we do here is to raise a gemma, to raise a J. That we can be able to do what it, both home and abroad. So please, I want everyone to understand me in this light. And then, always check so that you know where to fit in. So that you can be able to achieve what you have. Don't wait for only Sundays. Because if you wait for only Sunday, you wait till twenty twenty-six, before the Sunday will come. Come down to your turn. While we are at war, the war is intensifying every day, and we need your own support financially. So, thank you to everyone. And please and please, we want to see more town hall meeting. From Daspora than in, yes. We want to see more town meeting from Aspara than in the homeland. We want to see town hall meetings, state by state, country by country, countries, yes. Come up. Let us do it like we used to do it before. Don't allow the homeland to have more town hall meeting than you in Daspora. Remember that this responsibility is on your shoulder. Especially those in Daspora. God sent you to Daspora to have a comfortable place. To, to earn ten dollar, ten euro, ten pounds per hour of a job, or fifteen or twenty. Twenty per hour of a job and use it to fund your Biafra. Whereas, a Biafra in the homeland or in Africa will only gain that ten dollar or fifteen dollar or twenty dollar. For a day job, for a day job. But God sent you to abroad so that you can make that money in one hour of your job time. So that you can be able to support the Biafra freedom. So please, what God has given you is what. Other people were looking for when they were fighting for their freedom. So please, utilize this opportunity and let us shame the enemies of Biafra. We welcome everyone that are realizing the dangers. That they found themselves in the hands of the Ku Plotters and they have returned back. Please, as you come back, we welcome you. Come and support us financially. Let us move from where you left us, because we have made a lot of progress. We did not wait while we were going to go and dance. So check the progress we have made. Come and join and continue to fund as we move speedily. Thank you all to everyone.
Thank you. Let me just, uh, we appreciate every Biafran. We are all Biafran. But what we not can do. Evil people, sabotwa. Those that are working against Biafra or our freedom. If you want to be forgiven, make a U-turn. Turn around and start to do what is right. If not, we will not forgive. And we never forget. Because some people action. They are doing it knowingly, not unknowingly. Some people decide to fight our freedom. Some is just because of hatred, envy, jealousy. Why fight against what will work? If it is not broken, why face it? Us evil sabotwa. If you in Biafra land, start to pack your load, if we cannot deal with you. And if you live outside Biafra. Remember, just like uh. Uh, uh, one of our own used to say, sources, remember, under Unya, Ashura, he quoted from Unyendu. Is one airport when Biafra. Remember, you will go after the years, you will come back, unless you decide not to. And for those of you having children, pray, please, don't bring any child to the war. That the cause that will follow you, so that that child will not partake of it. Please, it's a warning. For those or for whoever that believe he or she is a Biafra. Don't bring any baby. Because that baby. A cause that will follow you, so that baby will not partake of that cause. Because all these evil people that are killing our people. By their words, action, or have colluded with Nigerian terrorists. The evil that will follow you all, so that child will be innocent of it. Because a lot of people don't know that there's something called karma generation. Not cause, God that created the heaven, Chukwakabia. He caused the evil, he caused Adam and Eve. That's why we always sing. We all sing true, uh, you know, being the children from Adam and Eve, right? Please, we will not forgive. Unless you repent from your evil way.
Turn around.
Just like the Bible always said, repent and be free or be saved. If you don't repent, you will perish.
Turn around.
If you are a sabo, Biafra, land will swallow you. If Biafra land don't do that, we will do it with our own heart. Because evil people have caused us pain, sorrow, agony. Especially when some are doing something knowingly, not unknowingly. And they will keep doing it. What joy? Do all these sabotwa evil people, what joy? What do you derive from it? Just like this uh tomboy woman, Chioma, Chioma Bryson, a cop, a Chioma. Bryson Chioma, whatever, call her tomboy, call him a criminal. What evil, what are they, what are they, what are they deriving? What joy is he giving? Fighting who you're not supposed to fight? Destroying who you're not supposed to destroy? Because of jealousy. Envy, hatred. Shame to all these sabotwa. This woman I just mentioned, I don't really want to mention anybody named today, but that's what it is. She and her group, Imam Madon, Chioma, Joy, Irobi. Azubike, Sam, Obi, Bryson, all these fools. They believe in another Diorama Biafra United and all languages. That this, this will come and save them. They even want them to come and be part of Brigg. So what is going on today? They start fighting again, right? You cut off cancer. If you let that cancer stay, it will come back and do what? When we identify these people that they are sabotwa, they are unstable people, you let them go. You free them. And they invite these people to come and destroy Brigg. And today, they are fighting themselves again. Foolish people everywhere. Fools. A while ago, the faceless, useless guy man called, I don't even know. If uh, if he's a layman or whatever. He fought Brigg. At the time, he was asked question. If Biafrans would keep supporting Brigg by funding our freedom, he said, no, don't donate there. Don't support, don't do this. He colluded with some group of people, Chioma, that tomboy and the. The woman Bryson Ekoma and others. Today, the same man was asked a question. Way forward, who to support? Where to fund? Where to donate to? Now he's singing the same song again that he's neutral. He don't support anybody again. All these unstable people, knowing that what they are doing is destroying our freedom. And they keep doing it. The air they breathe will walk against them, will turn to poison, disease. The water they drink, that water will be what will kill them. Everything on this surface is it. We walk against all of them. They have come to destroy us, both from the illegitimate governors, parading themselves in Biafra land. All the so-called Hanases, useless evil men. All the shifters that are bringing these terrorists to our land. All those that are be planted in Brigg. All of them that don't want Biafra to come. That we have no peace. We are struggling financially to fund our freedom, we know that. But they cannot stop the coming of Biafra. All these people, all their life, they will live agony, pain and sorrow. There is this one fool called Go Two Four Seven, I mentioned him last time. When I told him that everything will work against him, they won't have no peace, thought and play. All these sabotwas from Ralph and others, should never be well with them. Because they know what they are doing is evil. They keep doing it. Just because of hatred. Because of envy, because of jealous. because of envy, because of jealous. If they don't repent and do everything they can for the land of Biafra, to forgive them, to welcome them back, to accept them, for our creator to forgive and accept them back. And when they do that, we will know, I will feel it. I will know they have repented genuinely. We Biafra, we know, if they don't do that, they will have no peace. No peace for the wicked. Chukokabiya, my God, he will say it. God caused the wicked. That's why he said that the evil should turn and change their ways. If they don't change their ways, no peace. No peace for them. Fund your freedom, Biafra. Bring your money, you're a gemma. Nobody will give your freedom to you in the platter of good. Fund it is not crime. You are not committing crime by funding your freedom. And all these rich people, all these illegitimate politicians, governors that think they are reachable. Very soon, you all will be reachable. Very soon, this town will be full of you. And none of you will escape it. Thank you. There were.
Thank you, APM. We take that as your closing remarks, and we appreciate. We appreciate your presence. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, my APM, that was a.
There were.
I hope our Air Force One is ready.
Yes, our.
Emenike, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, you will ride, I, I will, you ride with us too.
Yes, I go along with you. I go along anywhere you go.
Yes, I hate to ride.
Anywhere you go.
Yes, yes, this job.
Yeah, it was, it was a nice ride for how many hours. It was a good one, right?
All right.
Shout out to all the enemy of Biafra. How many of you in Biafra suffer?
Yes, sir.
Any country supporting Nigeria against Biafra, your country will be overrun.
He said.
He said.
He said. So good night, sir. Good night, y'all.
Thank you, APM. Thank you to everyone, and see you, see you along the way. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.